Good morning, everyone. The time having arrived. I'll call to order the May 27, 2013 Board of Supervisors meeting. We will begin with a flag salute led by Supervisor Duran honoring the late John Peaches.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Supervisor Holmes. This morning, I have the honor of saying a few words about a very, very important man. A man of vision, man of service, commitment to his country and his community, and that man is John Peaches who passed on April 5, 2013. For those of you that didn't know John, John was my representative on the Roseville Veterans Hall Board. He's a great community servant. John was born to Greek immigrants in 1920. In 1939, he was a graduate of the Roseville High School. After college, Mr. Peaches served in the United States Navy in the Pacific Theater, and after the war, he returned to Roseville. Upon returning to Roseville, he became a successful contractor, developer, realtor, and community leader, and developed the first major residential subdivision in Roseville, Sierra Gardens. His vision helped create Sierra View Country Club, Placer Savings and Loan, the original Roseville Hospital, and Roseville Square, which was the city's first shopping center. John was one of these individuals who was into everything, and he helped create the Roseville Little League, designed the Clancy Field bleachers and Richards Little League field, and my sons have played on that field many times. Was the founder of the Rotary Oakmont High School Girls Basketball Tournament, and he founded the Roseville Historical Society and was its first chair. And throughout his life, he promoted a lot of different things and raising money for different organizations, several of which were promoting raising funds for local monuments, including the city's World War II and Korean War monuments. This one's for you, John. I know many of my -- I had the pleasure of serving with John over the course of the last several years. I know that there may be some folks here that served with him and knew him longer, so please, if you have something you'd like to say, go ahead.
Actually, did have the opportunity to know John, and Jack, you did a great job, eloquent job of covering his life and history and the importance to the city of Roseville, part of that old city, Roseville Guard that sadly we're losing, but great that you brought this forward.
I got to know him for the, you know, since I was elected, and very outgoing. I just have to say, he was just a delightful man. He was always friendly and come up to you and chat and make you feel good about yourself. So, he'll be missed. Very, very decent, nice man. Thank you Supervisor Duran. Madam Clerk, would you please read the statement of meeting procedures?
Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting of Tuesday, May 7, 2013. Agendas are available on the wall outside this meeting room. If you are here to speak on an issue not appearing on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker. The Board is not permitted to take action on items addressed under public comment. When you speak, clearly state your name and address for the record. All items on the agenda will be open for the public to address before final action is taken. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker, which will be monitored by a timer on the podium. If there is a person speaking on behalf of a group with no other testimony from another member of the group, please identify yourself as such, and your time may be extended at the pleasure of the Board. Keep in mind that the Chairman has discretion of limiting the total discussion time on any item. If you're hearing impaired, we have listening devices available. It is requested that all pagers and cellphones be either turned off or put in the silent mode. Thank you for your participation and cooperation.
Thank you, Ann. Now is the time for public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the Board on an item that is not on the agenda? Now is the time to come forward. Please come forward. State your name.
Good morning. My name's Vivian, last name's Yamamoto. I'm the president of the Sacramento Blue Star Moms. The Sacramento Blue Star Moms is a group of military moms. We serve Sacramento County and South Placer. We're very, very active in the South Placer area. Actually, we meet at the VFW, and I know Mr. Peaches because he was part of the Board there as well. So, I am here, number one, to invite you to our upcoming gala event that's being hosted on May 18 at the Citrus Heights Community Center. Our gala event's going to include our emcee, who is Mr. John McGuinness, the sheriff from Sacramento County; Mr. O'Connor, who is a resident of Lincoln, who is also a POW that was held for five years in Vietnam. We also have a Purple Heart recipient, who is also from Blaser County. In addition to that, we're also, the ceremony, the gala, I should say, is a segue to ceremonies and activities the following week, beginning on May 22. The Dignity Memorial Wall is a replica of the Vietnam Wall that's in DC. This wall that's coming to the Sacramento area is 240 feet long, eight feet tall, and it contains the 58,227 names on the wall, as is the wall in DC. This wall will be coming to the cemetery in Dixon, and it'll be escorted by Mordecai on the 22nd up to the Mount Vernon Memorial Park, where it'll be placed. On the 22nd, the wall will be erected. Mr. Terry, who is our Purple Heart recipient, will be placing his heart, Purple Heart there, at the base of the wall before it gets constructed. There's also going to be a private ceremony that day, but the following day, the 23rd, the wall will be open to the public, and the wall will be open to the public from the 23rd to the 27th, 24 hours a day. We are, the Sacramento Blue Star Moms have teamed up with Dignity Memorial to bring this wall here to this area. This wall, once it leaves, it'll be placed at Fort Benning, Georgia, for its permanent destination. This would be a great and wonderful opportunity for the public to come see this wall at no cost. And the opening ceremonies will be on Thursday at 6:30. We have the Scottish bagpipers, we have a children's choir singing, we also have a highly decorated military official as the guest speaker. The Secretary of the Department of Veterans Affairs will also be speaking. And on the closing ceremonies, which will be on Monday, the 27th, at 11 o'clock, there's going to be a flyover. The Army Band will be playing, and there'll be some other celebrations as well. At the gala, we have been, we have been totally blessed with having the Army Band playing.
Go ahead.
Typically, the Army Band, which has been in existence since 1861, do not play at fundraisers, but because this is such a huge event for our area that the commanding officers have elected to go ahead and authorize the band. So, I, this information has been placed in front of you. Also, we also submitted for revenue sharing. Like I said, this is a fundraiser for us, and is to help offset the cost of bringing this wall and having the public overall enjoy it. There's going to be rubbings. It's going to be, it's absolutely phenomenal, and we're really, really honored to have this wall here. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Any questions?
Any questions from Board members? Just thank you for the service you do and bringing this forward. I've been to that Vietnam Wall several times. I have friends that are on that, and it's very touching.
It's very moving, yeah.
Very moving.
Yes.
So, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
You bet. Anyone else in the public wish to address the Board on any item that's not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to Supervisor Committee reports. Are there any committee reports?
I have a, just, I got a letter from the Department of Veteran Affairs, State of California. Dear Chairman Holmes, during the period of July 1, 2011 through June 30, 2012, your county Veteran Service Office obtained new and increased monthly cash benefits from the United States Department of Veterans Affairs in the amount of $2,232,480. On an annualized basis, this amounts to more than $26,789,760,000 in new benefit payments. In addition, your county Veteran Service Officer obtained $12,477,372 in one-time benefits, which consists of single and retroactive payments received by veterans of their dependents. Using the conservative multiplier of three, this equates to a spending impact of at least $80 million from the annualized monthly cash benefits and $37,432 from the one-time benefits received. I hope that you will consider this valuable information when addressing the needs of a properly funded and fully supported county Veteran Service Office. With a net county cost of less than $53,000, your county Veteran Service Office once again remains one of the few revenue-producing offices in the county. Sincerely, Peter J. Gravette, Secretary, California State Department of Veterans Affairs. So, I just thought that needed to be recognized with our Veteran Service Offices and the wonderful service they provide to our veterans. Are there any other committee reports? Seeing none, we'll move to our consent agenda. Are there any items on the agenda that Board members would like to have pulled off for discussion? Are there any consent items that the public would like to have pulled off for discussion? Seeing none, we'll ask for approval.
Second?
Moved and seconded to approve consent agenda. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Duran?
Yes.
Riker?
Yes.
Euler?
Montgomery?
Yes.
Holmes? Yes. In the interest of time, I'm going to ask for Department Item Number 6C, Children's System of Care Independent Living Program update in consideration of contract with Placer County Office of Education. I know there are a lot of people here to address this issue, so I wanted to get that out of the way so everybody can get back to their regular lives. Who's, Richard, are you presenting? Yeah. Okay. Richard Connect.
I think we've got some slides available as well, if we can ask for Jeremy to load those.
Okay.
Maybe later in the agenda, but hopefully we can get those up. Good morning. Richard Connect with the Children's System of Care. I'm joined today by David McManus, Assistant Chief Probation, and Renee Ragacho Anaclario, Associate Superintendent for Education Services at Placer County Office of Education. The Children's System of Care has a long history of championing partnership with our private community-based partners, who are often better positioned and able to meet the needs of our young people and their caregivers. With your Board's blessing, partnering with our private nonprofits has allowed CSOC to create in the last six years more than 25 new contracts with community-based organizations serving nearly 5,000 persons per year. We're fully committed to the use of our community-based organizations, where and when they can be most effective. While these public-private partnerships are often, most often, successful and efficient, there are some areas of our service continuum where the benefits of doing so have some clear limits, and where collaboration with another public agency and the resources and assets it possesses will yield significantly enhanced services for our young people. At your Board meeting in April, you requested an update of the independent living programs to foster youth and emancipated youth, and to hear about the department's process for determining delivery mechanisms and partnerships. ILP typically includes a set of vocational and career preparation, personal budgeting, and other educational and resource connecting services. As I provide that update to you, I want to express the deepest appreciation and gratitude to our community partners, who for many years have helped us meet the needs of our foster youth. The current provider has met all contract deliverables with satisfaction, and we're profoundly grateful for their good work. Shane Libby and her Unity Care Team and its predecessor agency, Whole Person Learning, under the leadership of Christina Nicholson, for many years have brought dedicated and committed professionals to our partnership and helped us prepare our young emancipating youth for adulthood. We're very mindful that changing supportive relationships for our young people is not easy, and when not done in a collaborative manner, may not be helpful for our youth. For this reason, we informed the current provider of our intent to end this contract last fall, months in advance of the contractually obligated 30-day notice. We've held meetings with the contractor to discuss and plan how to best facilitate this desired adjustment to an enhanced model. Notwithstanding these efforts, we're aware that many of our young people don't have a full understanding of the tremendous value that this proposed partnership will provide to them, and we appreciate the opportunity this morning to provide that additional understanding. County Council has been consulted throughout this process and has assured the department that we're in fact exercising our full and legally available options to approach another public agency about this service. While the department elected in 2009 to seek partnership via a bidding process in order to assess the capacities of the community, there's no legal obligation to do so. Since 2009, PCOE's Ed Services Team has been redesigned and re-engineered, and with the noteworthy enhancements of the education office in this area, I determined that approaching them about partnership for our ILP young people was the right thing to do. Health and Human Services and probation department staff, with the support of local judges and other smart policy board agencies, have spent the last year reviewing service gaps and evaluating delivery models. Current and former foster youth and other stakeholders have been inquired of as to their preferences about how to improve and enhance existing services. I would add that the Children's System of Care is a pioneer in youth and consumer voice inclusion, having far and away the oldest and most developed youth and parent partnership of any system of care in the Western United States. Youth with lived experience have been co-located with CSOC leaders for nearly a decade and sit in joint leadership process with decision-makers. The parent and youth model in Placer County has been widely celebrated by researchers and federal authorities for many years. Notwithstanding the relative success of Placer's ILP services, CSOC and probation departments are constantly seeking to improve the quality and reach for our care to young persons. The proposed collaborative model for delivery of these independent living skills services through Placer County Office of Education will significantly expand and enhance the historic services in Placer and offer the most seamless and comprehensive continuum of resources and supports for our foster youth. The Educational Services Division has in recent years championed a number of significant improvements. Accordingly, they've been awarded competitive grants by the state mental health authority and are a national pilot testing site for the, with the University of North Carolina in implementation sciences. We want the implementation and evaluation of our ILP services to be the best in the nation. PCOE's Ed Services Teams are leading the movement toward the use of data, not just for compliance purposes, but to establish the actual quality and capacity of the service they provide to students and families. I think it's important to understand that this effort reflects an emerging state and federal expectation expressed in recent blue ribbon panel recommendations by the Administrative Office of the Courts, by federal administration for children, youth, and families authorities, and others. I would offer the words of one federal judicial authority with expertise in this area, who states, quote, "If we want to track the educational progress of children in the child welfare system, we should use data already collected by our schools. And if we are truly serious about measuring child well-being, we must find ways to move from data silos to integrated data systems," end quote. We want the same capacity and expertise for our ILP services here in Placer. Our slide presentation depicts the current service structure, which includes one-to-one case management, small and large group workshops or events, and there is an expectation for tracking and reporting of services. The proposed model on the right includes each of these existing components. I want to emphasize that every ILP-eligible young person will continue to have an ILP Coordinator/Case Manager. No services are being eliminated under this proposal. Here are the staffing models of the existing contractor and the staffing with the proposed agreement. While the total cost is slightly higher, the proposed model makes 2.4 full-time equivalent ILP coordinators available, and because of PCOE's related foster youth mandates, this model leverages existing PCOE leadership and management expertise. The cost increase is 100% state monies. No county jobs are being added under this contract. You can see here that under its existing educational mandates, PCOE already delivers a wide range of support services to foster youth in Placer schools, either directly or through its district and school partnerships. This architecture will prove useful in linking ILP young people, who may not be fully engaged in these historic educational supports. And finally, we believe that the model proposed contains a number of value-adding elements. It will clarify and focus all educationally-related services to Placer's youth and young adults to a single ILP coordinator. We have youth and parents who often report that there are too many professionals in their lives. This will help with this challenge by centralizing all education-related services to a single persona. Many of these services will be available on school sites, greatly solving the longtime challenges with transportation and attendance. The onsite services, contrary to some community perception, will not be delivered by pulling young people from their existing mainstream curricula or classrooms. ILP coordinators and local school partners will serve foster youth before and after school and at any other time that is convenient to the youth and their involved caregivers. We're excited that this model of partnership with schools will in fact better engage and integrate young students in the available supports, which have not always been fully utilized. This contract also will greatly, will provide far greater accessibility for Placer's youth to PCOE's regional and occupational training programs, to vocational services provided through the local education agencies, including access to Department of Rehabilitation Services for youth with disabilities, and to specialized tutoring not currently accessed by our ILP youth. Due to its existing service continuum and capacity, the new ILP staff will be able to engage preemptively with young foster youth before the mandated age of 15.5 years, furthering the engagement and trust that is necessary when working with young people. We will, under this model, have already established the needed relationships, so that by the time key academic choices must be made, our service recipients are fully engaged. This will raise rates of engagement and success in programming. Many of our foster youth, of course, have involvement with our court-appointed special advocates, and this model will provide an enhanced connectedness to the resources of our CASA partners for many youth. PCOE has also successfully obtained commitments from a number of new private partners, including local civic lenders and healthcare providers, to construct a network of unique and value-adding service structures, including voluntary in-kind supports, which our youth will find very helpful and effective. PCOE already maintains a county-wide database of all foster youth required by its own state mandates. Linking the additional ILP service through PCOE will close any and all gaps in coordination and tracking of Placer's emancipating youth as they enter ILP. The very specific granular data for academic and behavioral performance not currently available to court partners will now be readily integrated into court reports. With PCOE's inherent linkages to Sierra College, ILP staff will be more successful in connecting foster youth in the most seamless and efficient manner to the college transition support services at Sierra, where PCOE is a founding member. Placer students enrolled in Tahoe Truckee Unified Schools will now be directly linked to ILP, which has been a systemic challenge for the county. This will create a far greater likelihood of equitable access to these services and supports for our Tahoe-area youth. Finally, it should be identified that the process, processes of delivering ILP services to young people includes engaging them and providing them with specific information and resources. These processes are inherently educational. Child welfare and probation services around the country have for decades imported public health nurses to teach and track health and dental care, psychiatrists to treat behavioral health challenges, and other specialists each in her or his own area of clinical specialty. ILP services are fundamentally and practically educational processes, and this proposed model effectively imports educational experts in getting young people ready and supported for adulthood. This proposal continues to place Placer ahead of the curve in serving our foster youth. I'll point out that other counties have also been seeking alternative ways to partner with education. Sacramento, Fresno, and Orange Counties, three of the largest counties in the state, have recently been awarded a national grant to pursue integrated care models by and between child welfare and their local education partners. Our foster young people deserve the very best access, the very best depth and breadth of services, the very best opportunity to be as prepared as possible to enter adulthood. This proposal places the onus of responsibility and accountability for those outcomes where it belongs, with education and child welfare agencies. I have no doubt that this model or methods, very similar, will shortly be the norm in the state and the country. I know that Renee has some additional perspective on PCOE's part, and that Assistant Chief McManus also has some thoughts. At their conclusion, we're happy to take questions, and otherwise would strongly and energetically recommend your approval.
Before we proceed, I should, in the interest of transparency, let everyone know that I hold a part-time position with the Placer County Office of Education under the Maintenance, Operation, and Transportation Division. It is, the only thing I make decisions on is when to change oil in one of the vehicles. So, I just wanted to state that before we move forward. Thank you. Mrs. Anaclario.
Thank you. Good morning. I'm transitioning with eyes that won't see this and you at the same time, so excuse me for the up and down. Placer County Office of Education is an excited partner with Children's System of Care. We have partnered in many other aspects as part of the Smart Policy Board, and we are now excited to provide seamless support to our older foster youth, building on our existing services. We believe our identity as the county office of education and our integrated partnerships with schools, our school districts, and businesses in the community uniquely position us to do this job very well and deliver a very unique program that can become a model for California. PCOE is the lead educational organization in Placer County. We meet monthly with all of our superintendents. Our assistant supes for business meet together, for personnel, for curriculum and instruction. And in that process, we share resources and coordinate our work on behalf of the 70,000 students in Placer County. We have very strong relationships and direct access to staff at the school, the very same staff that determines student academic program, determine counseling needs, intervention needs. Our relationship over the years with our foster youth liaisons and homeless liaisons have benefited those students by changing the system that provides services to them, not only one-on-one services. We believe you cannot underestimate the power of that partnership when it comes to providing service to our most at-risk youth. Some of the results of the collaboration over the years include all districts in the county investing in a common training for teachers on professional learning communities and a common understanding about what all students need to know and be able to do to be successful. Many of our districts have worked with us and, under our training, provided tiered systems of intervention based on that common understanding. Placer County 49er ROP program has enjoyed the reputation of being one of the top ROPs in the state. We work with all of our high schools, and in each district, we provide career training and job development and placement for 1,500 youth every year and 80 adults in both Placer and Nevada Counties. The program has 30, over 30 courses, and that covers 15 different industry sectors. We have 400 business partners, and these business partners provide internships that lead to jobs and post-secondary training for the participants in our programs. We've experienced significant change over the past several years. Four years ago, PCOE organized a community task force, and we did that with the intent of looking at our existing services, not just Placer County Office of Ed Services, but services across the county for at-risk youth, to identify what were the gaps in programs and services, and determine ways to fill those gaps. We brought together representatives from Children's System of Care, from probation, from a variety of our partners at Sierra College. We brought together youth. We had youth that were foster youth, as well as probation youth, and we had representatives from our schools. As a result of that, we initiated a number of programs with over $1 million of one-time money that Placer County Office of Education provided for mentoring programs, partnerships for expanded tutoring. We revitalized and redesigned our student attendance review board and provided extensive training for schools to develop the tiered system of intervention that I spoke about earlier. The work has also been the impetus, and was the impetus, to restructure our staff. We restructured our services for at-risk youth and foster youth and homeless youth in particular, hired new leadership and additional staff, invested in pre- and post-academic assessment tools to really determine the amount of growth that students were making as a result of the work that we were providing the support academically. We invested in a, in training, in school wraparound, and have a staff that are trained to help school teams look at what are the natural community supports for youth that need to be able to become independent? What are the things that are available through church, through community groups, through clubs, so that their support system becomes the natural part of our community as opposed to reliance on social services? Over the last three years, we've also worked, as Richard mentioned, with the National Implementation Research Network. The whole premise of their work is that if you don't have strong implementation, it doesn't matter how good the program is, that without implementation, way too many of our efforts end up with little sparks and bits of success, but not anything systematic. The efforts that we've engaged in with the National Implementation Research Network has trained us over the last two years, and we are training our districts has trained us over the last two years, and we are training our districts in making sure that when we make a change, it sticks. We believe we bring a wealth of educational and career resources to this partnership with CSOC. We are looking at models to intentionally braid funding so that we can build on existing resources, not allow staff to work in silos, but instead look at where are there logical connections between services we already provide and services that could be added with minimal expense and minimal, and zero duplication. We're looking at how we can leverage services, including the services that you heard about a few minutes ago, and we believe that the funds in this contract will only fund a very small portion of the array of services that can be accessed through our existing resources and connections within Placer County. So, we look forward with enthusiasm to developing a model ILP program.
Any questions from board members?
Is this time for comments?
Yeah, any questions for?
We think the probation department just has one quick comment. It's part of our presentation.
Thank you. I just wanted to simply say the probation department does support awarding the contract to PCOE. We believe that the services they're offering will meet the needs of our youth, and also note that the historical collaboration between child welfare, probation, and PCOE has brought a very high level of service to our youth. Thank you.
Thank you. Couple of comments. You know, I normally have quite a lot of good things to say about our Health and Human Services Department because I think they provide outstanding service. But in this instance, after having a discussion with the Health and Human Services Department and how this whole process went down, I'm sorry disappointed, really disappointed. I'm extremely, and I'm shocked, Mr. Connect, how you can treat this contract with this particular contractor as if it was a contract for lawn care. And, you know, justify it because we can do it and we can terminate the contract. We can go ahead and do it. That's exactly what I heard. Really disappointed at the way this went down. I appreciate the fact that you did all of the investigation and the data moving forward, but when you and I were talking on the phone, it was apparent that you never thought to talk to these folks before you decided to implement this program and see if there was a way that you could align and collaborate with them before you terminated the contract. And I've got a huge problem with that.
Supervisor Montgomery.
Thank you. I have just a couple of questions. I'll save my opining for later. Has Unity Care met the goals that we established within the contract when we entered into that contract with them?
They haven't met all contractual deliverables, yes.
Okay. And the, the contract, as I understand, allows for cancellation at any point in time with due notice?
It does.
The additional needs and goals that we've identified, were those included in the contract, or are they all just new?
So, the, the resources that the new proposed model would bring to the table are enhancements to the existing core required elements within the contract, both the historic and the proposed contracts, if that answers your question.
Okay, it does. Thank you. Have we asked the existing contractor if they would be willing to provide the enhancements that we're looking for, and is there anything that would prevent them from providing those enhancements?
So, as Representative, or I'm sorry, Supervisor Duran mentioned, we did not ask the current contractor. Certainly, some of the programming that our school and county offices provide are available already. The challenge in this historically is that our youth have not been enrolled via this third-party collaborative. Because PCOE administers ROP and has direct authority for them, the engagement and enrollment by our youth via a PCOE ILP contractor will be far more seamless and timely. The gaps in information, which are the driver for the state and federal authorities, cannot, of course, in most cases, be addressed without agency-to-agency agreement due to privacy rules. The behavioral and academic data needed to fully implement effective services can't be shared with non-public agencies with the same type of fluidity as it can between two public agencies. There's, of course, a unique state waiver that constructs the Placer model that allows for this information to be shared in a unique way in Placer, and that's why this collaborative has value.
Okay. So, I think what I heard then is there's nothing that actually prevents Unity Care from enrolling students into the ROP program today?
That's, that's correct.
Okay. And the vocational services provided through the local education agencies, including California Department of Rehabilitation Services, they also can enter into that today?
They are fully available. The reality for our youth is that a very small percentage of our eligible foster youth are engaged in ROP and KEES programming.
Understood. But we have not asked them as part of the contract in the past to do that. Is that correct?
Specifically not asked. It's, it's an expectation that all of the available community resources, regardless of where they are, if the youth is eligible, that the ILP teams will engage them in such a way that they will have access to the services.
Okay. And then the specialized tutoring referred to in the staff report, is that also available to Unity Care should they choose to take that direction?
I believe they do have some students that are participating currently. We contact all foster youth up to age 18 in Placer County twice a year, so there is overlap there because we would have contacted the same youth and families to offer that service.
Okay. And then the college transition support services at Sierra College, that's available to Unity Care for those, if they were to interact with Sierra College?
It is, and in fact, Unity Care participates in that process. PCOE is a founding member of that transition support team and helped to pioneer its process.
And then, as relates, and this is obviously of concern to me representing the fifth district, as relates to the students enrolled in the Tahoe-Trucky Unified School District, did we specify in the contract that we would look for Unity Care to do particular outreach to those students, or was it just an expectation that that would be rolled into the contract?
The expectations are the same for all youth in the county regardless of their residency, specific, regardless of geography, correct?
Okay. And, but again, there's nothing that would preclude them from taking that action moving forward?
That's right.
Okay. What, a couple more questions. Is there anything, if for some reason this board were to say, "Let's continue the contract with Unity Care through 2014," and probably I should address this question to you, is there anything that would encourage PCOE to next year say, "We're not interested in taking forward a contract if we were to allow the current contract to come to completion and then go to PCOE next year?"
I don't believe so. We're certainly looking out for the best interest of serving students and anxious to do that as soon as possible, but certainly not looking to say that we're not willing to play a year from now.
Right. Understood. And I, you know, don't get me wrong, I think PCOE, PCOE would do a fantastic job. I don't have any questions or qualms about that. My concern, though I'm not quite as passionate about it as Supervisor Duran, is it appears to me, at least on the face of it, that we entered into a contractual agreement, which I understand is cancelable with appropriate notification at any time, with a set of expectations that are being met. And I don't see what would preclude us from a board from saying, "Let's talk to Unity Care. Ask them if they're willing to add these things that we've identified as enhancements that we'd like to see in the program," and just move forward from there. So, that's, those are really sort of my questions and concerns right now. I'll wait until I hear other comments, but I very much appreciate the information.
Sure. I would just offer that as the director of the service this year, I'm going to be responsible for another 25 foster youth or so who will become high school seniors. I don't relish the continuing to watch and hope that they'll get access to the service. For two decades, we've had various community-based organizations try to get our youth into ROP and KEES and other programs. And if I could just throw out one quick analogy, if I'm baking cakes and my job is to bake a cake every day, and if I have to go to a neighbor's house to get the eggs to make my cake every day, I have certain limitations. If the eggs are in my own kitchen, my own pantry, then I'm going to be much more successful. This consolidates the services in such a way that I'm assured, much more assured of an outcome that will yield a good taste in cake on time every day. That makes sense.
Thank you.
I just have a question. Unity Care was awarded the contract in 2009, was it?
Originally for contract year, I think, 1011. They've been, this is the third year of their contract.
And so, the RFP went out to Unity Care, whole person learning, and the Office of Education?
The RFP was distributed countywide to any entity that would like to propose.
And Unity Care was chosen at that time?
That's correct.
And I think, Ms. Anna Clario, you tried to address what's changed since then. Can you elaborate on that just a little bit more? I mean, it's pretty detailed there, but...
We have an entirely different department, different leadership, staff changes, and a restructuring of probably most components of that program. Much more data-based. The additional pieces that we're talking about with ROP have not been traditionally part of the program, and I might add to your question, Supervisor Montgomery, that ROP has always been accessible to all kids in Placer County, but it takes a high level of commitment and transportation, a number of things to be successful in that program. And we, by nature of the program, because we're partnering with business, we need to make sure that those pieces are in place before we place a youth in the community in a job. So, what we believe we would bring that I think would be difficult to bridge in the short term is that direct connection to the teachers, the direct connection with the ILP worker, working with those students to make sure that we're filling the academic gaps, we're making them successful in that chosen career path. And that would be something very different than the average person who applies, or it's not really an application process, but who signs up to become part of one of the career pathways from our high schools. That's a role that our high school councils take on, but we feel like we would be creating the bridge that would make that a successful program to them, and so that would be entirely new.
And just for clarification, can you tell us your position and which departments you oversee at the Placer County Office of Education?
I am the Associate Superintendent for Educational Services. I oversee all of the curriculum instruction and leadership work with our districts, so we provide the professional development and leadership with any changes in the educational system, the latest of which you may have heard Common Core standards and any changes in assessment. We lead those efforts. And then I oversee the 49er ROP program and the prevention and intervention programs that cover foster youth, homeless, and our most at-risk youth in the county.
So, it seems to me that you've addressed the shortcomings when the first ROP went out and enhanced the agency. Is it fair to say?
At the time the first ROP went, RFP, thank you, ROP, RFP, went out, we had an employee at the time that was very interested in applying, and we allowed that to go forward, but it was not a large effort on the part of the county office and did not include most of the existing components right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from board members? Okay. And now I will open it up to the public. Anyone in the public wish to address the board on this item?
Good afternoon, board supervisors. My name is Andre Chapman. I'm the president and CEO of Unity Care. First, I want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to come and present and, you know, thank the relationship that we've had for the last several years with the county, and we've, we just have had a great working relationship. But I would say this experience is an example of why the general public does not trust county government. You know, in 2009, when we bid and won this RFP, and we've been very successful, and it was demonstrated when our contract was renewed in June of last year, and literally less than four months, this news came out of nowhere. We were not a part of any discussion, we're not, we're not a part of any focus groups to say, "How can we improve services? How can we enhance services?" There was nothing. So, for us, this seems very, it's not transparent, and I think that's where you have challenges when you're working in county systems. And let me say, when we're talking about kids and you're talking about doing something that's going to change the impacts of kids, you've got to have their voice at the table. Our education system, as great as it is, is not service kids in foster care. Look at the data. Less than 10% of kids graduate from high school out of foster care. This is a population that needs to have adequate, appropriate, timely services delivered to them. And so, for Unity Care, I will say that our ability to provide quality services is what we've been doing for the past 20 years. Between Monterey County and Placer County, we have services. This model that is being proposed, there's less than five counties in the state of California that still have this model. We know that if you want to be nimble, quick, and timely to these kids, you have to have community services out there. This is not an eight-to-five model. Our staff work nights, weekends, evenings, and the ability to engage these kids is a number-one priority. You can, you can build as many cakes as you want, but if no one comes to eat them because you don't have the ability to effectively engage these kids, then you're going to build a model that's not going to be successful. So, we're saying that this needs to be put on hold. Let us come to the table, the people that are doing the work, the quality work, and be a part of the dialogue. And we're going to bring the evidence that we know works for us. We're an ILP provider in San Mateo County. San Mateo County just went away from a model. They've been doing IOP in that county for, and they just went away from a model that was very similar to this because they've realized that they can have all these classes, but if they don't engage these kids, where they, where those kids are, if they're not youth proficient, if they're not culturally proficient, it's not going to be effective. And this is where this, this decision is leading. So, what I'm asking you guys to do today is to advocate for these kids. These kids need to be at the table and decide what's best for them, and bring the providers that have the relationship and the expertise and the experience that knows how to do this. And one last thing, enhancements of services? I don't know what that means because we got a copy of the contract. It is the exact contract that we designed. It's our contract. So, there's nothing different from the contract we have today to the contract that we just saw that they're now signing. So, I don't know what enhancement of services really, I don't know what that means. So, I think we need to do some analytics to really decide what is it that we're trying to improve, what's not being done right today, and give Unity Care the opportunity to say, "Well, is that something that we can do, yes or no?" Thank you.
Supervisor Duran, do you have a question?
Yes, sir. I have a couple of questions, and I do agree with your opening statement about, you know, what government's supposed to do and the interaction between the public and government. That's why I'm so passionate about this because, in my opinion, this is not how we do business. This is not how I do business. But there is a question that I have with regards to Mr. Connect's assertion that the ability for kids to access ROP is lacking under Unity Care. I need you to speak to that.
So, I'd like to have Shane come up, Shane come on up, but I will say this, you know, we engage kids wherever those kids are, and the kids have the opportunity of coming and accessing services. This is new for us. So, you know, the refer, I don't know, it sounds like what they're proposing are things that are behind the curtain so that collectively they can gather the data and figure out where kids are. I don't know what that is. So, that's why this is all new for us. But our ability to access kids and get kids engaged, that's what we do very well as an organization, which is why when you look at the data of how many kids are now served in IOP today, and you look back five years ago, we're serving 40% more kids than you had five years ago in IOP because we know how to effectively engage and get kids back connected to the, to services that are appropriate.
Any more questions?
I actually had one quick question for Mr. Chapman before we hear from Shane. You mentioned that the schools, California schools, I'm assuming, graduate 10% of foster youth, I believe you said the figure was?
Yes, that's correct.
What is the foster graduation rate through Unity Care? Have you tracked that?
No, what I'm saying is, is kids that are in high school, that graduate from high school, you have less than 10...
Understood.
Right. So, we're not an educational unit. We don't graduate kids from high school.
I understand that. How many kids, what percentage of kids who go through your program graduate from high school?
Oh, from our program? Well, Shane, you want to give the outcomes?
Yes. I would, without having the stat in front of me, I would say 80 to 90% of our youth. Depends on what your term is.
Shane Libby.
Shane Libby.
Yeah.
Sorry. So, it just depends on, do you mean graduate, or is it GED equivalent, or?
Well, I don't know what the 10% refers to. I don't know if that's actual graduation or GEDs combined. I'm just trying to get an apples-to-apples comparison on what that percentage would be to public schools overall versus Unity Care.
Right. So, so what I was giving you was just a outcome of the number of foster care, number of kids in foster care actually graduate from high school?
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
So these are kids that actually graduate. This, that's, that's a national statistic of kids that actually graduate from high school. So that are in foster care that actually graduate. So two years after kids graduate from high school, you find that over 60% of those kids are homeless, unemployed. I mean, just the data of kids in foster care. So, and I was making that reference when we're talking about an educational system that, as great as we are as an educational system, we have, we have significant flaws when it comes to serving kids in foster care.
Understood. So just so I'm clear, nationally, 10% of foster kids graduate?
From high school.
So that does not include kids who get a GED?
Uh, no, it does not, high school.
And what percentage of the foster kids who go through the Unity Care program graduate from high school?
So the kids that Unity Care serves, about 80% of our kids graduate from ILP programs, which is based upon the outcomes that, that we measure them to in ILP.
Do they graduate from high school, 80% of the students?
Yes, yes, absolutely. Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
That was all I was looking for.
Okay.
Thank you.
Your question hasn't been answered, has it?
I'm going to answer your question.
Yeah, right, okay.
You have my name, we're good.
Yeah.
To answer your question, was, how many referrals we did to ROP? Refresh my memory, because it was so long ago.
The question was, there is a perception that Mr. Connect elicited to that that there are not, that, that you could do a better job of getting students into the ROP program.
Yes.
Can you speak to that?
I certainly can. We, in our program, we have a variety of employment programs that we have access to for our youth. Our, our program is very youth-driven, so we put out there all of the options for our, our youth to choose from, as well as how we know them and what we know about the programs that would work best for them, and then they pick. Ultimately, we cannot force any of our youth, nor would we ever force them into a program. I have absolutely no, I have made referrals to the Keys program. We actually work very closely with Keys and have done, I've done a presentation to them and a training to their staff on best practices with foster youth. And we have a wonderful relationship. Their staff would have been here to support this. Unfortunately, the, it's not a comfortable environment to do that. As far as ROP, at any given time, had PCOE come to me and had a conversation about this alleged deficit, solved. We could have had a conversation, we could have come up with a referral process, and we would have fixed it. We do, it's, I don't understand why it's just coming up now. I have been the program manager for three years. And not, not once has a, any representative of PCOE or CSOC brought that to my attention, that, that they wish to have this done. It is, in fact, listed in our contract as a referral partner, as are many other referral partners. So it's, it's just simply not a problem. The referral process is not a problem. I've no doubt the numbers may be low, but I don't think that's a responsibility of Unity Care.
That's a responsibility?
Of PCOE to educate on that and bring that forth to us if there's a problem. We can certainly assist them. Yeah. I also want to reiterate while I'm, because it's my moment. That contract and the services that you see up there is very much, Mr. Chapman touched on it, our contract. Those are my words, I wrote in the scope of work. You can take the two and compare them, and they are almost verbatim my words that I wrote last year in the spring of 2012. There's been very little change in that contract. Number one, that's concerning to me as to why my scope of work was inserted. And number two, nowhere does it talk about these enhancement of services. There is, if you're going to use the same contract, perhaps somebody should have indicated where the enhancement in services is. I met with Mr. Connect recently, the 29th, and he wanted to make sure I understood the reasons, the key reasons for this decision. His reasons that he gave was, one, the ROP referral. In the past, it's been referred to as a referral gap, and I was very confused as to what that meant, because when I came on board, I increased the enrollment numbers in ILP from about 50% referral from Children's System of Care to about 98%. And that only 2% deficit is just because sometimes new youth enter the system that haven't been brought in. So I was very confused. So when I met with him, he clarified that it was ROP. And then henceforth, I understood that. The other thing that he mentioned, the other reason is basically that PCOE has access to schools, so actual facilities to offer services, which very much reminds me that that is going to be a school-based service. We serve, about 60% of our caseload is emancipated in AB-12 youth who are no longer in high school. At no point today or in any previous conversation has anyone mentioned all of the youth, the 60% who are not in a high school. So it doesn't matter if you have a facility at a school to offer services when 60% of the youth are not in attending one of those schools. The last issue he gave was this database, this access to a database that would allow this seamless transition. Division 31 regs for California for ILP, 31-525 is the section, very clearly lay out the requirements for ILP and the referral process. Referrals must come from the case-placing party, which is the social worker or the probation officer, not the foster youth services workers, which is what the current contract states. It is in direct violation of those regulations. And that referral, the database, we have an arrangement with Child Welfare that I get a report every month of all youth who are eligible for services, and I follow up with every single probation officer and social worker and make sure that they are enrolled. There is no issue with the database, so those are the, as of the 29th, those are the reasons that were given. We have an excellent relationship with Sierra College. Our staff are in that office upwards of four, sometimes five days a week, to the point that they actually offered us office space so that we could sit there and have a partnership with them because we, we help with that transition to education so thoroughly. We have increased engagement. Just a very quick example, and I know time is running out. Last year, we held a support group for our youth, last spring, first ever, just kind of a support group, nothing related to education. We had five youth sign up, three of which maintained, which is pretty much the standard. This year, we offered that same support group. We had to close the group at 14 because that many youths wanted to come to the group. We continued throughout with an average of eight youth in that group. And when it ended last week, we, almost every, or every participant in that group was sad. I was shocked, because sometimes, you know, you think they're just bored and they're just coming for the incentive money and for, but they actually wished that the group was continuing. And that is a direct result of the engagement efforts we have done throughout the years. And it takes time to build a comprehensive program. And we have done that in the, in the four years that we've been the provider here. Do you guys have any questions for me at all about that?
Any questions? I see none.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Shane. I see some foster youth providers in the audience, and I'd like to open it up to them before we open it up for the... Yeah, Mr. Ryland.
Thank you, Chairman Holmes, Board. My name is Bill Ryland. I am here today representing Quinania Family Services, a foster care and adoption agency. I'm also the administrator of the Quinania Homes for Teens, the Crisis Resolution Center, and a key collaborator, primary collaborator in the Quinania Community School. I would like to offer my endorsement for the county's effort to align Placer County's services to foster youth. My experience is that foster, that Placer County's collaborative approach is uniquely suited for streamlining, streamlining the services. Streamlining personnel, economic needs, access to information. I feel ultimately resulting in the most service for the foster dollar bank, which will deliver more foster youth services. By consolidating in a number of agencies and representatives affecting the lives of our teens, I see that as a step towards lessening, lessening several systemic problems we have in foster, serving foster youth. Our teens suffer from multiple agencies, all operating with best motive, but unintentionally pursuing different outcomes or offering conflicting information throughout our youth transitions. This results in even more confusion for a teen that is already under stress. We also find that there are so many stakeholders involved in our young people's lives between the placing counties, the host county, the school districts, service agencies and organizations, and of course, then the foster care provider, that we often see communications stifled. We then see complete communication breakdowns. I believe streamlining services by unifying the schools, the foster youth services, ILP services will have a positive outcome for foster teens in Placer County. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Ryland?
Thank you, Bill.
Morning, Don.
Morning. My name is Don Kleinfelder. I'm Executive Director for Child Advocates of Placer County. We do the Court Appointed Special Advocate Program. We currently have volunteers, CASA volunteers, serving 160 foster youth in our county. I'm here to speak on behalf of PCOE. I believe that it would be an increase in services and a benefit to the youth to transition over to PCOE, primarily because I think what the county really excels at is collaboration. And from the moment that it looked like the contract was going over to PCOE, we were contacted by representatives of PCOE saying, "How can we interact better with the organization? How can we use your CASA volunteers who already have a strong relationship with these youth to improve the transportation issue, to just make the services flow better?" And I think that level of collaboration has been lacking in the past. We don't have that kind of relationship with all the other partners. So there are other, many other good reasons have been stated, but for me, that's probably the biggest reason why we would support it. We see a lot of room for, for great partnerships with PCOE. And, and, yeah. Any questions?
No question, thanks, Don.
Thank you.
Any other providers in the audience that provide services to foster youth that wish to speak at this time?
Hi, thank you. My name is Miranda Pond, and I'm a resident in South Placer County and a former foster youth, second-generation former foster youth. And I'm here today to speak on behalf of Unity Care, who's the current contract holder for ILP services. I have a lot that I wanted to touch on, but I wanted to first just give you my own lived experience. I come from a generational cycle of foster care. And my biological mother had been in foster care. She aged out, and due to the lack of access to resources like what ILP gives, she wasn't able to sustain independent living. And consequently, me and my siblings that ended up in foster care, one of which was trafficked into human trafficking, eventually ending up in prison. And, and, oh, at 44 years of age, she ended up in prison and a prostitute her entire life because there weren't community-based partners that were able to step in and give her that one-on-one mentorship that ILP gives. Another sibling ended up homeless with her children. Another sibling ended up getting referred to the US Army, and she's now a veteran and able to access higher education through her GI benefits. And then there was me. I was eventually adopted, but my adoption failed, and I ended up in Placer County at Rockland High School. And I petitioned the court to remain in my school of origin, and my rights were denied. I ended up going back to Sacramento County schools where I did not receive the quality of support services that Placer County provides to their youth and eventually ended up having to choose between homelessness or my GED, despite being an avid student and receiving immense support from my schools. Anyway, I ended up having my daughter at 19 years of age, at which point I came out to Placer County where I had always lived and wanted to come back to my own community. So I ended up enrolling. At that time, I was 18 years old, 19 years old, I had my daughter. And I attempted numerous times to get plugged in with ILP under the Whole Person Contract, which was the previous contract contractor for ILP Services, which was a for-profit company. And time after time after time, it wasn't until a month before my 21st birthday that I was finally able to get them to connect with me. And all I was given was a basket full of very cheap, like pots and pans that bubbled when I used them. And it was my experience, so during that time, I came to know, reconnect with Tammy Bronnik, who's the past County Office of Education Board member, who I'd known throughout my childhood through Roseville City School District. And, and she, she was the previous program coordinator, manager for ILP. And that was the first time that I was able to see, although I had age, I was no longer eligible for those services, I came to be the Placer County, sorry, the Placer County Chapter President for the California Youth Connection, which seeks to include the youth voice at the table of policy and implementation practices. And so I had hands-on, you know, knowledge and relationship with other foster youth that are in that transition age from 14 and a half to 24 years of age. We would meet at Sierra College, and at that time, there weren't any other, other than ILP Unity Care. For the first time, that was the first time CYC was able to connect with, with our partners and collaborate. When Tammy left out of state and she resigned and a new ILP person came in, I was too old for CYC, and consequently, I came to work with Foster Care Alumni of America. And our mission is to connect the alumni community, transform policy and practice for those of us in and from foster care. We believe that we have a unique voice and perception of what works and what doesn't work because of our end-user experience of the foster care system. And for those reasons, I strongly support Unity Care keeping this contract. It's for the first time I've been able to evaluate and see in our county, in our community, where youth are actually getting access to resources, they're getting one-on-one mentorship, which I have to touch on, I don't believe any district or county Office of Education staff are going to make themselves available in the evenings when they're with their families cooking dinner or on the weekends like current ILP workers do. We, this is an at-risk youth population that, they live in crisis to crisis, and they need that mentorship. They have those established relationships. Another thing I want to touch on is although they're not pulling, the plan is not, my understanding from today, what I heard is that the plan is not for them to pull youth out of class, but to mandate these programs and these group work during their lunch period, which would take these youth, the one time in their day-to-day life where they can just be a normal kid is at school. They're adolescents, they're social beings, that's imperative, their social and emotional development, especially when they're, they've been through all the reoccurring trauma that they've been through. So taking that one time where they're able to come and just be a kid and have those social supports and take it away and mandate that they attend these services is not okay. I also want to point out, it's my understanding that she's on the Board of Directors for CASA, who was just up here supporting her, her project. There's been a lot of backdoor deals. The youth voice that is brought to the table in Placer County happens to be one, two, maybe three of the same exact paid Children's System of Care staff members that are no longer youth. They're 27, 26 years of age, and they have their own small little cohort of youth that they will continually go to. There's not a divorced representation. I also want to point out that the ILP contract, or is it ILP or Foster Youth Services through PCOE is supposed to have a youth advisor, or a collaborative advisory board, and that has failed to happen for forever. And it's supposed to have former, current and former foster youth along with all these collaborative member partners. So, thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, ma'am.
Good morning. My name's Linda Williams. I'm part of the work at Sierra College, one of the founding members of the College Transition Support Team that's been alluded to a couple of times. I think what bothers me about today's testimony is that whatever the outcome, relationships are broken. I can see that, and I can see where youth are going to be hurt. My students are in this, are in this seats, and it bothers me that, that, that they might be forced to say, to, to pick a side one way or the other, when in fact, it's this youth that we're all trying to serve. With that, I, I want to express to you that Sierra College's College Transition Support Team has had a great collaborative relationship with PCOE on so many levels. Right from when we started this program five years ago, we had breaking down, we had broken down silos. We, I think, you can tell that I'm a little upset about this process this morning. The, the transition that would take place, I think, I'm not advocating, you know, Unity Care's done a nice job, but I, I see the benefit of having PCOE grab this particular program as it relates to helping youth transition easily, especially into post-secondary education. They made reference to only 10% of our youth graduate from high school in the United States. 3% get to post-secondary education. Of that, 2% graduate with a degree. And I think that the more collapsing we can do and easier transition to either post-secondary trade school or whatever it is that they're trying to achieve, I think it's better for the youth. But today's process, I think, is going to be... But today's process, I think, is going to be, it's going to be a difficult thing for all of us to overcome because we've been a very successful, a very successful program in Placer County.
I've attended some of your ceremonies at Sierra College, and it is a great program for those underserved youth.
And it's all partnership. It's all relationship-based.
Right.
Yeah. And I really, I've been great partners with PCOE in this whole process.
Thank you. Anyone else from the foster youth services providers that want to speak to this?
I'm a provider.
Well, you were a provider.
I was. Good morning. My name is Patty Archer Ward, and I'm the former administrator of the Prevention Programs at PCOE. I resigned last June from the Placer County Office of Education. The visionary leadership of Bud Batista, Rick Salata, Tad Catada, and others created a county culture and built a reputation in California on a collaborative network of integrated relationships, innovative programs, and a mutual commitment to comprehensive services to our most vulnerable children and their families. I think that's evidenced today by all of the wonderful partners who've been up here to speak about the relationship that they have had with PCOE and the support of foster youth. Under the existing leadership, the Foster Youth Services Program has been decimated. The quality and number of services reduced, and the percentage of Placer County's foster students served diminished. Renee and Richard made a very nice presentation. Most of the services that they described were for all youth, Placer County students. The majority of the money that they are allocated, and Placer County does receive the greatest amount of funding per foster youth residing in Placer County than any other county in the state of California. Relationships with community, agency, and school partners, caregivers, and youth have been negatively affected. Trust is generally cited as a key factor. Administration should have consulted their local advisory group of collaborative partners to determine the direction of program services and their provision prior to moving towards severing the contract with Unity Care Group and awarding it to PCOE. But there currently is no advisory group as required by the FYS grant, and they were notified of this about a year and 1/2 ago, that we needed to resurrect an advisory group since the previous advisory group had collapsed. I'm seriously concerned. It seems to me that the Placer County Office of Education ought to be concentrating on addressing the educational challenges of our struggling students, as that is the primary objective and the hierarchy of services as outlined in the FYS grant. And in fact, the FYS grant says, just a moment. I'm sorry, I've lost my place. Basically, what it says is, the majority of the funding that they received must be spent on tutoring and academic support. They received, I believe it was last year, $268,000 in the core grant. And I'm sorry, I don't know how much it was that they received in Title I. Title I neglected funding comes in based on the number of students who are in out-of-home They have just reduced the number of staff in educational services, and I'm concerned that the three staff who will be receiving this add-on to their already full-time duties are not going to be able to provide the same level and quality of services that Unity Care Group has, because at least one of them has a contract with the State Department of Rehabilitation to provide the Kies program services. I believe it was 36% of her contract, so I don't see how she can spend 80% of her time providing this service. I'm wondering, how many of you, or how many of your children or people you know, returned home, moved back in after college or after their initial foray into adulthood? We probably all know some youth who have done that. While our foster youth don't have that opportunity, they don't have the long-term relationships with folks to, if they fail here, to go back home or to have somebody to call, to ask questions, or have their concerns addressed. And unfortunately for many of our youth, as Andre pointed out, end up disconnected, homeless, incarcerated, as unwed parents. The situation is dire, and it's really important that they have these trusting, long-term relationships like they have with the dedicated professionals at Unity Care Group who are solely dedicated to transition services. It's the most critical time in a foster youth's life. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. We're running way over time here. I just wondered if, bringing back to the board, to get a kind of sense of where they're going before we end up here all morning.
I'll just start off and say that at this point in time, I can't support what HHS is asking us to do. And I think I've already done enough damage here. But my point is, is that I think that in this particular, my concern is at the end of the road that all the kids are served, right? And in this relationship, it seems to me, and this isn't a guarantee of work, this isn't a guaranteed contract. The point is, is that they should have been provided the opportunity to, you know, correct or to implement whatever you think needs to be implemented to make the program more savvy and to make it more current. You don't just throw the contract out and then go in a different direction. That's just not, I'm not comfortable with that at this point, so.
Supervisor Wigan.
Question, Richard. Your memo says that you spent the last year reviewing service gaps. And I acknowledge the unusual, I think it's unusual from my perspective, from what I understand, behavior of discontinuing an existing contract, even though we have the contractual right to do that. But I'm curious more, obviously, this has become rather exciting. Is there something that drove that review? Were there deficiencies in your mind with the existing levels of service? Or was it more a review of different models that reflect the fact that you think that obviously there's a higher level of service to be achieved with a different relationship? Could you elaborate on that a little bit more?
Sure. The fundamental awareness we became aware of early on in this process was that a very small percentage of our eligible foster youth participate in the ROP, Kies, and related kinds of programming. It's extraordinarily small number. And from my office every day, I can practically see hundreds of students who participate with the County Office of Education in their job preparation training. And I recognize none of them. They're not our youth. They're students from elsewhere, and there's no reason why our foster youth shouldn't be actively engaged with them. Again, it's not the sole responsibility of the ILP contractor, but the reality is that our youth don't get there. And by co-locating the broad ILP service structure within PCOE, our youth will have direct access. The referral processes will be streamlined. There won't be gaps in referring from one entity to another and hoping that it doesn't sit on someone's desk or sit in someone's inbox for a while. It's a seamless, solely-contained referral process, and it will close that gap. That's one example I think that I hope answers your question.
Yeah. So I guess where I am, Supervisor Duran's comments are well-taken, and I'm also troubled by the, normal behavior would be to complete a contract and then move on. But I'm balancing that against, you know, I'm not, this is not my area of expertise. I don't, you know, generally, I also have a very favorable impression of our delivery of health and human services. It is a model. I've heard a lot of information today, and I, you know, I'm not in the business of second-guessing your judgment as it relates to these contracts. I guess my preference would be that as we go forward, discontinuing existing contracts should be an exception and something that's at least more thoroughly vetted. But today, the comments and the reasons why you want to make the change makes sense to me, and I don't want to second-guess that.
Supervisor Montgomery.
Thank you. I appreciate both supervisors' comments. My, I would say my most general concern about the request to discontinue the one contract and enter into another today is, you know, what message does that send to future potential partners with the county, both public and private? If we cancel a fully-performing contract, I have some real qualms just about that process. So my, I would have to agree with Supervisor Duran and say that I would not be able to support today's request. My question would be, why not allow Unity Care to fulfill their contract for the following, for the next year, and have them work to meet those enhancements that we've identified and to fill those service gaps? It sounds, from what Shane said, that there's certainly opportunity to get more students into ROP now that it's really been identified as a very specific shortcoming, but it sounds to me like it's not a shortcoming that's a fault with their performance in the contract. So I would not be able to support this agenda item today.
Supervisor, your.
Yeah, I view a, even though we do have an out clause in our contract, I view an early termination of a contract as something that should be reserved for extraordinary circumstances. I don't see that in this case. You know, falling back to High School Debate 101, if your challenge is to change the status quo, you must first demonstrate where the status quo is deficient, and I haven't seen that yet. There might be an argument to be made that there might be more services that could be provided, but I haven't seen that the current provider, if asked, could not also provide those services. And so I'm inclined to think that we continue to work with Unity Care, maybe work to redefine a scope of services within our existing contract, or maybe properly set the expectation for when the contract expires and runs its course, that we have a new scope of service that we will be looking for, and at that point, we part with.
So is someone willing to make a motion or give direction?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I would move that we deny the request by staff in order to terminate the agreement with Unity Care and move forward with the Office of Education's proposal at this time.
Second. Been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? No. All right. The decision has been made. Thank you.
Jim, did you get Florida hammocks?
Well, I knew there was a lot of people going to be here later, so.
And now they have places to sit.
Yes. What do we vote on? Do we have to vote on? I mean, I was a Nazi earlier than these people.
I want to apologize to all our departments and the people that are here for timed items. Knowing that there were a lot of people going to be here for the 10:30 timed item, I wanted to get this item out of the way to allow some of our citizens to have a place to sit. So without further ado, we'll move now to our 9:30 timed item, Community Development Resource Agency Planning Services. Landscape Design Guidelines.
Thank you, and good morning. I'm Crystal Jacobson with the Placer County Planning Services Division, and the item before you today is an update to our landscape design guidelines, which were initially approved by your board in January 1988 and then revised in 1993. So they have not been updated since 1993. The guidelines establish consistent and specific design expectations for residential, commercial, and industrial projects. It applies to all new development and substantial site alterations that would require discretionary approval. So anything with a use permit, major subdivision, that sort of thing. What would be excluded in the guidelines would be, or from the guidelines, would be single-family homes, agricultural open space uses, and then specific area, or specific plan areas with their own design guidelines. It's also important to note that any design criteria that is established through our community plan would basically trump these guidelines. There may be some overlap in the design guidelines, but there are other guidelines that would be, that we have in the county that are either approved through a specific plan or a community plan process. So the intended users of this would be the SEDRA staff, so our agency staff, other county departments, architects and developers, as they're making their way through putting together designs for various projects throughout the county, the planning commission, your board, and then the public. So really, I think the idea here is, what we did, what we set out to accomplish was really to give these guidelines a facelift, so to speak. The old guidelines were black and white. There weren't a lot of good graphical, you know, illustrations of the expectations that are set forward in the guidelines, so that was really the overall purpose here. There's a lot in this document, you'll see a lot of these sort of not this but this, trying to guide people through, you know, photographs or some sort of visual to show them what the guidelines are trying to accomplish. So here, you can see, you know, what we'd like to see here is, you know, trees that mature to provide shading in parking lot. Here, again, landscaping to, you know, appropriately screen things like a trash enclosure. So you're going to see a lot of that in this update. And then again, really, the overall intent is just to really improve graphics and photo examples, so there's a lot of new, you know, color graphics and color photos. And then finally, what you'll see is the three major changes that resulted in, really the only modifications that the guidelines attempted to change, were standards and sort of improved technologies related to defensible space, water conservation, and stormwater management. So pretty much all of the, all of the standards and guidelines are carryover from the old document, but the only changes that you're going to see are related to these three issues. So with that, we bring forward the planning commission's recommendation that your board adopt the negative declaration prepared for this with your RADA sheet, and then adopt a resolution adopting the new landscape design guidelines. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Supervisor Montgomery.
Crystal, thank you. Nice presentation. Appreciate that. Couple of very quick questions. I know that we specifically called out, like, some state laws about defensible space, that these new guidelines cannot be in conflict with 4291, I'm assuming.
Correct.
Does the same hold true for TRPA's design guidelines? Do they trump our guidelines?
Right, yes.
Okay. And then our, how does this interact with our hazardous vegetation abatement ordinance? Does the HVA take precedence over?
Yes, any ordinance would take precedent over this.
Okay, good. And I know that the intention of this was to try to help the planning process upfront. So is it the intent that when developers come forward with proposals and they do have these landscape plans, that those would go to the local design review committees? And would they have some say in what?
Yes, in some cases where we have those committees, like in the Tahoe area, they would go before those committees. So any landscape plans would go before them for review. But we don't have, you know, those don't apply to all areas of the county.
Understood. Understood. I just wanted to make sure where they did exist.
Yes.
Because I know that's always an issue with the design review committees that are very local.
Correct.
And then my last question was on, and I'm glad you had a picture, of dumpsters. I think we do have some specific guidelines in the Tahoe area about dumpsters having to be, I believe it's fully enclosed. How would that, again, interact with these new design guidelines?
Well, any guidelines that are TRPA-specific or that will be developed through the community plans would trump these, but I think the overall intent of our agency is to provide for screening of enclosures and to have trash enclosed all around, like that one that I, I'll go back to that picture here. This one here on the bottom, this is what we want to see in the Tahoe region and throughout the county.
Okay. Because frankly, in the Tahoe region, what we would really need is a combination of not this and, but this, because we do need that full enclosure, I believe, under the TRPA.
Right, correct. So that would trump these standards.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that I was clear on all of that. Those are my only questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Wigan.
It just popped into my head, your drainage comment. With the PCCP, we're going to be required to embrace low-impact development standards. Has this, hoping that we're not going to be having to do some work over again, have you anticipated that to some extent with the design review guidelines?
Yeah, this incorporates some of those techniques, for sure. We have talked about doing a low-impact development. We have talked about doing a low-impact development manual for the western portion of the county. We actually have prepared one for the Tahoe area, so anything over, I think, 5,000 feet in elevation, we prepared one for the, you know, that area. And we intend to be doing the same for the western portion. I think what's important to note is that these are guidelines, so a lot of, you know, should, kind of encouraging folks to adhere to these. But if we, or when we prepare a low-impact development manual for the western portion, we could use a combination of both. So there's, there's definitely an opportunity to pull, you know, where we need to out of both documents.
Supervisor Yuler.
Yes, and then kind of along the lines of Supervisor Wagon's question, as we discussed when reviewing these, the issue as it might relate to self-generation renewable energy projects, solar photovoltaics, anytime where somebody is proposing either roof-mounted arrays where they could demonstrate that the landscape guidelines, at maturation of the landscape materials, the trees might provide shading, you won't be requiring those things that would otherwise shade arrays, or likewise, when you have parking lots that are being proposed with elevated arrays providing covered parking, and landscaping would otherwise be in conflict with that, you would not be requiring the landscaping that would be in conflict with the elevated arrays.
Correct. We, you know, these are guidelines, and they're used largely by staff. And so we really, as a project comes forward, you know, we look at the unique characteristics of the project and the site, and kind of just guide, you know, these help to guide the process, but no, they wouldn't impede any of those.
Okay, thank you.
Your light is on, Supervisor, are you okay? Okay. Okay, see no more questions? Does anyone in the public, in the audience wish to address this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
I meant that we adopt the negative declaration, including the errata sheet for the proposed landscape design guidelines, and adopt a resolution adopting the Placer County Landscape Design Guidelines.
Been moved and seconded to approve the item. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Item is moved. We'll now move to our 9:45 timed item. Sheriff County Executive, South Placer Adult Correctional Facility Phase One Transition and Funding Plan. Mr. Sheriff, Captain Wu.
And you brought back again.
Oh, no. Did you drink your lunch?
Uh, all this will be answered. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board members. First off, before I start on this, I would just like to say that yesterday was my honor and privilege to represent the county at the California Peace Officers Memorial, where Sheriff William Ehlum was enshrined. Sheriff Ehlum was killed in a car crash in 1951 in the Dollar Hill area of Lake Tahoe, and inexplicably, never added to the California and National Monument. Yesterday, we took care of that. And I want to publicly thank Lieutenant Andrew Scott for his efforts to bring that about. So again, just a side, side comment. This morning, still morning, we would like to provide a briefing on the South Placer Adult Correctional Facility and ask your support on our plan to phase it into operation.
That was easy.
That was easy. Got my easy button? Not really, no. It has not been easy. It's been very complicated, very expensive, yet very critical. And before I go much further, in the back of the room, let's see, there is recently retired Captain George Malum, who really spearheaded from our office the development of this just incredible facility. And I think also, it's really important to note that, starting with that, and then where we are today, this, we would not be here today without just an incredible collaboration between the county executive staff and my office. Will, the presentation will begin with Captain Wayne Wu, who took over from George, and I asked Wayne to kind of take a look at this with, with a fresh set of eyes. And then working with our new administrative service manager, Judy Laporte, and the CEOs team over here, Becky Rigan and Mark Giacominis, it's just been phenomenal. And we are, we are here today to begin to talk about the transition into this facility. And it's critical, because I think we, over the last several months, we've tried to keep your board informed of the incredible changes in the inmate population that we're experiencing in Auburn. Realignment, AB 109, is without doubt the most significant shift in public safety that I have seen in my over 39 years on the job here. And what it means to us is that we are seeing a more sophisticated inmate, more dangerous inmate. These are inmates who used to go to state prison. Many of them are veterans of state prison. Now they're serving their time for their new offense in our facility. And they bring with them an increased level of sophistication. They bring with them prison alignments, and they pose a greater danger to staff and to other inmates. This facility, SPASIF, as we call it, is going to allow us to better manage this population. It is a facility built prior to the implementation of AB 109, of realignment, but it's a facility built which is ideal to house AB 109 inmates. And that will allow us to meet our obligation to safely house these people and to provide an increased level of public protection. So without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Captain Wayne Wu to begin this collaborative presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Captain Wu.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you. I think it's important to lay some kind of background and some foundation of how we even got here today. We do have a PowerPoint that should be coming up. But in the, in the 1990s, the county conducted a criminal justice system master plan, which really recommended the implementation of a South Placer criminal justice campus to include members of the district attorney's office, probation, the courts, and a correctional facility. As, as we've gone through our history and corrections at the sheriff's office, you know, we've reached times of overcrowding. In the late 80s, we were sued for overcrowding, and we are currently under a federal consent decree, which allows us not to reach any capacity over our maximum board-rated capacity, which is currently 646 rated beds at the main jail. In 2007, 2008, we've experienced some of these high demands on the correctional system. They don't have a. And one of the ways we manage our population is to release people per that federal consent decree. We release pretrial inmates on promises to appear, and we release sentenced inmates early on their sentence. When we were experiencing those high demands in 2007, 2008, we released a total of 94 years of unserved sentences at that time. We also incorporated shortly thereafter some, some very progressive alternatives to incarceration. We made some collaborative efforts with the district attorney's office. And prior to AB 109, we were able to get that time of unserved sentence down in 2011 to 1.2 years. So we, we've done a very good job up to today of trying to manage our population with the best, most responsible means possible. Also, in 2008, the county conducted another needs assessment, which recommended the construction for the SPASIF facility down at the South Placer campus that's now known as our Santucci Justice Center. This recommendation was supported by the Criminal Justice Policy Committee, and it was adopted by your board on June 23, 2009, to commence construction, where we now have 390 beds down in South Placer. And along came AB 109 in 2011. No, you're all familiar with that. I'll go over some quick statistics that kind of just show some of the impacts AB 109 has had on our facility and our ability to really function as a key component in the giant system of the criminal justice system. In 2011, the year AB 109 was implemented, granted, it was implemented in October, so we didn't see a whole lot of impact that year. Our average daily population, or ADP, in the jail was 528. In 2012, that had jumped to 598. Looking at our ADP for the first quarter of 2013, we're at 626. Our operational capacity, or where we need to be to accommodate for classification and peaks, is 581 inmates. So we're well above that. When AB 109 was implemented, CDCR initial estimates felt by AB 109 full implementation in 2015 that the sheriff's office here in Placer County would need 276 additional beds from what we had. In 2012, the sheriff's office conducted, and updated needs assessment, which was really the only needs assessment we have currently that takes into account some of the impacts for AB 109. Again, assessing for peak periods, that needs assessment recommended that we may need up to 1,025 beds by 2018. The other measure I mentioned is those, those Fed cap releases. In 2011, I mentioned, we were down to 1.2 years. 2012, promises to appear jumped to 472 inmates we released on assigned promise to appear, and we released 193 inmates with credit time served on their early sentence. This totaled 4.1 years of early sentences. In 2013, again, just looking at the first quarter, we had 462 promises to appear, and 96 people released on credit time served for 1.4 years. The month of April was not a very good month for us. We released over two and a half years of unserved sentences just this last month. Basically, year-to-date, we've already released more people on promises to appear and more time on unserved sentences than we did all of 2012. As the sheriff mentioned, one of the things the nons don't include is nonsophisticated. We've seen the culture of our jail and our inmate population shift. They're much harder to manage, and they're much more dangerous. There we go. They've been much more difficult for our staff to manage, and they've been much more dangerous. Fights have increased to almost a daily occurrence. Fights in 2011 compared to 2012 went up by 18%. Again, comparing the first quarter of 2012 to the first quarter of 2013, we've seen a jump in 53%. Earlier this year, we had approximately 30 inmates in what can only be described as a small-scale riot, take place in one of our open dormitory-style housing units at breakfast time. Further investigation revealed that this fight was directly related to racial lines and prison politics, the kind of experience, things that I've mentioned that we're experiencing with AB 109. Contraband has also gone way up. We're seeing a lot more contraband, weapons, narcotics, tobacco. From 2011 to 2012, the numbers of contraband went up by 38%. Again, comparing the first quarter of 2012 to 2013, it's gone up 289%. So when we first initially finished construction on South Placer, our plan was to fully open the facility and close three housing units of the main jail, like the sheriff had mentioned. It turned out to be very expensive. I think initial estimates were to be somewhere up around $21 million. We're very sensitive to the economic crisis in 2008 and the current budget constraints, and, which led us here today to talk about maybe a phased approach and getting in down there. And that's how we came up with what we're going to talk about today, was our Phase One proposal. Phase One, I know you've heard in the past that we estimate probably an 18-month startup process from the time we get the go-ahead. We, I think we could do it in maybe 12 to 18 months. This plan might be, not be quite as complicated with not as many numbers of staff that we're looking at. But what's critical, I think, to get a start is we really need to stand up a transition team. And that transition team really needs to start working on the policy and the procedures. They'll be the ones that'll train the staff that are going to be hired to work down there, develop the post-orders for all the workstations, and really figure out how this facility's going to operate under this Phase One plan and not being fully open. They'll conduct all the safety checks and vetting of the security systems of the facility, and they'll start considering working on the logistics of how the actual move will work, and, and looking at what Phase Two might look like as well. This Phase One approach, we want to open the minimum-security housing units down at the South Placer campus and Housing Unit Two. We feel this would be 240 beds that we would open down there at the campus. And having the minimum-security facility open down there would also allow us to have a reliable workforce to work in the central kitchen, and it would allow us to take advantage of the state-of-the-art laundry services that we have down there, and we can start utilizing the jail laundry that's set up down in South Placer. We selected Housing Unit Two really as a cost-benefit analysis. It took the least amount of staff to house the most amount of inmates to try to get in here with this Phase One approach and, and really be conscientious about the budget. The one thing about Housing Unit Two, when we initially constructed it, two of the tanks down there were designated to be kind of administrative segregation or lockdown tanks, and they only have single bunks. So we will have to add, double-bunk those cells that are already prepped for them, so we'll have to add 30 bunks in order to be able to utilize that housing unit and see the 120 beds. What we would do is close minimum security in Auburn, which is a net of 160 beds, and also move that staff down to the South Placer facility to help offset some of the costs for, for the staff down there. And so what we have is a net gain of 80 beds. As you can see, this is a picture of our current facility in Auburn on the left, and the new South Placer facility on the right. It's a photo of the dayroom. You know, the minimum-security facility that we operate in Auburn is a 1941 renovated army hospital warehouse. It's built of unreinforced masonry, and in, in our original design, it was just meant to temporarily house some inmates when we faced overcrowding issues. And even at that time, the Board of Corrections had some serious concerns that it was unsecure from contraband due to the rec yards, where it's located, and things like that, and did not feel it was adequate to even house misdemeanants. Now, to date, as of Friday, 43% of the inmates over there is a result of AB 109. This shows the officer workstation of the minimum-security area. On the left is the current facility in Auburn. On the right's the new facility down in South Placer. Obviously, South Placer offers us state-of-the-art security electronics. The line of sight, as you can see, the vision abilities and the lack of blind spots down at South Placer really is going to make it safer for the officers, safer for the inmates, and allow us to really be compliant come August with the federal regulations for the Prison Rape Elimination Act. You know, as I wrap my, my portion of it, and I'll pass it off to the county executive's office to talk about the funding strategies, as you can tell by the numbers that we've given out, we're kind of out of balance, I like to use the word "out of balance," as far as the criminal justice system. We don't have to look in Placer County to a consultant, we don't have to look to another county, to a study, to find out what happens to our criminal justice system and our ability to impact recidivism and have inmates participate in evidence-based practices when we reach this, this critical mass where we're at now. We've seen it firsthand in 2007, 2008. We're quickly past that point, in my opinion. Yeah, we haven't hit 94 years yet, but we're well on our way. We really feel that this Phase One approach is a good balance, taking into consideration the current fiscal constraints, but yet giving us some much-needed breathing room to where we can slow down some of those Fed cap releasing, we can utilize, you know, the consultant that I think you guys have heard recently talks about the carrot and the stick analogy. And we're quickly losing the stick, and with losing the stick, we're not going to be able to impact recidivism rates and take advantage of the intent of AB 109 and some of these evidence-based practices. So with that, I will turn it over to Becky Rigan with the county executive's office.
Any questions for Captain Wu first? Seeing none, we'll. Becky.
Thank you, Captain Wu. Judy, good morning Supervisor Holmes, members of the board, Becky Rigan and Mark Giacominis from the county executive office. After seven years of planning, design, and construction, it's our pleasure to be here today discussing plans for bringing the South Placer facility online. Before we review the funding plan, I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the work by Captain Wu and the sheriff's office to revisit the Phase One transition plan and reducing costs down to the figures that we are considering today of $7.8 million in the first year and $9 million in the second year. This revised approach still accomplishes several countywide priorities, and it brings the county a step closer to achieving the Justice Center campus envisioned in the original 1990s master plan. And it also allows for the closure of the antiquated 1940s-era minimum-security barracks that Captain Wu described at the Dwyitt Center, which, due to their age and design, has become a rising-cost center in recent years. And three, the net addition of 80 beds system-wide allows some breathing room for the Corrections Division to more safely and effectively manage the jail impact from the 2011 realignment legislation. The plan we are presenting is one approach for funding the facility that our office believes to be feasible. It allows for the facility to open as intended in 2014, but we also believe that at this level, it is sustainable into the future, assuming that these early stages of economic recovery that we're beginning to see continue as anticipated, and that the revenue assumptions built into our multi-year model are achieved. We have reviewed- We have reviewed the details of the Sheriff's Cost Plan. This slide captures the highlights of their plan. First-year costs total $7.8 million and are comprised of 1.7 in one-time expenses, 1.3 of that is upfront O-PED costs for 36 positions, and $400,000 of that is start-up for materials and supplies, such as mattresses and make clothing and the like. $6.1 million is anticipated in ongoing expenses, with $3.3 million in salaries and benefits for 36 correctional staff, and $2.8 million for administrative and overhead costs, building, maintenance, and utilities, and other services and supplies, including medical and food services. Due to growth in public safety revenues, applied cost reductions, and public safety fund balance, first-year costs are fully covered within the Public Safety Fund and rely on $4.3 million in public safety balance carryover, $1.8 million in the Sheriff's portion of new state AB 109 funding, a $1 million contribution from the Sheriff's existing operational budget, and $700,000 in a funding formula correction from CDCR to existing AB 109 funding. This approach anticipates a residual Public Safety Fund balance of $1.9 million, which would be available for other public safety priorities, and over the next several months we will monitor and update these and other revenues and return to your board with recommendations of final budget. Year Two costs increased from $7.8 million to $9, as the Sheriff assumes full-year operations. Cost increases are distributed across those primary areas of salaries, administration and overhead, building, maintenance, and other services and supplies. And due to projected slowing of the growth of public safety sales tax in Year Two and Three, the funding plan assumes reduced available Public Safety Fund balance from $6.2 million to $3.3, a contribution of $1.4 million from the Sheriff's existing operational budget, and use of $1.5 million in public safety reserves over the next three years. This is factored in in order to meter the general fund impact, and it also assumes continuation of that CDCR funding formula correction of $700,000. This leaves an anticipated shortfall of $2.1 million in 1415 and $3 million in years 15, 16, and beyond. So based on current cost and revenue projections included in our multi-year model, our revenues are budgeted somewhat conservatively, although far less so than in past years, but should they hold true, this may require departments to absorb up to 60% of projected cost increases through fiscal year 16 and 17, which could translate to defunding of 25 to 30 currently vacant-funded positions. It may also require all departments excluding Corrections to decrease their operating margins by 2.5% to 5%, and this figure was determined based on their average fund balance returned over the last four years. So again, this assumes current revenue estimates in both the Public Safety Fund and the General Fund, which we will continue to monitor and update as part of final budget development. Should Public Safety revenues exceed our estimates, then the anticipated shortfall would be reduced, and the need for General Fund and thus the impacts to departments and other General Fund funding priorities would also be reduced. Should General Fund revenues exceed projections, again, the impacts described would be mitigated and would increase revenue available for other board priorities. So again, this is one approach for moving forward with South Placer. Our approach avoided impact to any existing staffing, but it did anticipate some redirection of revenues within the Public Safety Fund and the General Fund to make this work. But again, we believe this approach to be, as outlined, to be feasible and sustainable into the future. So that concludes our presentation. At this point, we'll turn the discussion to your board, and we are all available for any questions you may have.
Any questions from board members?
I just wanted to touch on the 60% of the costs being absorbed by our department. If I was a department head, I'd get a little nervous about that. Have they been fully briefed, and do they understand where this might head in future years? I mean, we're going to be cutting services, obviously, by shortening staff, so I just want to make sure that we're okay.
I think I'll turn this part of the conversation over to Graham Canals.
Thank you. Graham Canals from the County Executive Office. The precursor to looking at the phased opening plan that you just heard about is our multi-year budget framework that was presented to the board back in March. And in that document, the intent was, with discussions with departments, to work through a sustainable approach related to the General Fund and the Public Safety Fund for the next several years. And one component of that is the approach to cost increases. And what's included in that that was presented to your board in March and has been discussed with all departments in the county between, actually before the March discussion leading up to it, is that for cost increases over the next several years, that departments would be absorbing an average of 60% of that amount. And one of the things that was discussed in that March, at that March board meeting was the degree to which that is a one-size-fits-all versus an average across the General Fund whereby some, it may be a higher number, where they may be offsetting revenues to reduce the amount that would be absorbed, whereas others may have smaller margin walking in the door, and so would need to be protected against a 60% cost increase. So it could be absorbing that amount, so maybe a much lower amount. That framework was a precursor to this discussion related to the South Placer facility and the phased opening plan, to first put us on a sustainable path related to the General Fund and the Public Safety Fund, and then this is an attempt to balance the many tensions between all the different priorities and the costs that occur within the General Fund operation, within the Public Safety Fund operation, in a way that is intended to be sustainable over the course of the next several years. It's, clearly, there are impacts, there are impacts in every corner related to this, as Captain Wu spoke to, related to where they began and how this has evolved over the course of the last few years, and also in the context of how this plays out in terms of the countywide operational model and infusing in our best sense for what's occurring related to countywide revenues over the next few years.
So it would be safe to assume that as, in the years past, 2015, 16, that General Fund contribution to that would be increased? Would that be a fair assumption?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor.
Thank you. This morning at Medler's, we had a little bit of a discussion, don't go anywhere, Brian, because you might need to answer this, and had a little bit of discussion about, you know, the opening some beds at South Placer versus closing the minimum-security barracks here in Auburn. And the question came up, and I didn't have an answer to it, so I'm going to ask it now. Have we looked at the possibility of keeping the minimum-security barracks open, and if so, what would that cost? And would that serve a purpose that would then allow more beds at the South Placer facility to be used for the medium and higher-security prisoners? And I don't know who wants to take that, because it's a multipart question. I'll start with Captain Wu.
Yeah, one of the issues is the facility. Yeah, it probably might be more cost-effective to stay at the minimum-security barracks in Auburn, and there would be some savings realized, but the facilities are so antiquated and they're becoming unsafe. You know, we recently lost a whole section of showers, and I had to have 123 male inmates share three showerheads for two months. So it's those kind of issues that continue to crop up, and I believe there's some good cost avoidance issues. We'd probably in the best interest of the Sheriff's Office and the county to get us out of that dilapidated facility.
Okay, thank you.
Captain Wu, who qualifies for minimum security?
Well, that's a, that's kind of a moving target these days, sir. You know, back when I was a deputy sheriff and I would work over at the minimum-security barracks, it was full of, you know, DUI offenders and petty thieves, and like I said, as of Friday, it was 43% full of AB 109 inmates. So these are felons that would previously have gone to state prison. You know, we're trying to shoehorn them in the best we can with our classification system and maintain not only safety for the inmates, the officers, but public safety too, to minimize escape risks. So the classification is changing with the people that we do have to send over there.
More of a sophisticated?
Very much so.
Since I live out there close to the minimum security, I'm sure my wife would appreciate that we're moving them to South Placer. Any other calls? Supervisor Ullrich.
The slide with two previous that was showing our ongoing costs associated with full-year operations, we did not have, there we go, did not have detail associated with salaries, benefits, admin, overhead, and then building, maintenance, utilities. I'm curious as to what steps we are proposing to take as we move into new facilities, consistent with as we have with some of our other facilities, as we move into new buildings rather than hiring county staff or operations, maintenance, and some of the service-related functions within those buildings, we simply contracted those out. What steps are we taking along those lines with this facility to keep those ongoing costs lower?
This facility does assume use of the Pride Services contract that was just reviewed with your board, and I don't know, Captain Wu, if you'd like to speak to that?
Currently, we have utilized the company's CGL Kitchell and contracted out services while it's, you know, kind of in its mothball phase, and the proposal right now is to continue a CGL Kitchell for facility maintenance once it's open as well.
Okay. And are any of the functions that are currently being performed by either sworn officers or corrections staff based on the existing facility in Auburn and the need for interaction, direct interaction with the inmates versus the new design of the new facility, opportunities for inmate movement and all the rest that don't require the same kind of level of handling? Do any of those result in operational efficiencies that are saving costs on an ongoing basis?
Yes, there's some definite operational efficiencies built in. Again, like the Sheriff noted, Captain Malin did a phenomenal job at designing the facility, and we've learned a lot of lessons from our Auburn facility. So the facility design down there, everything kind of comes down to the inmate. So visiting, medical services, all those things, the inmates very rarely have to leave their housing unit, which cuts down on the amount of staff that we have to have to, as far as floor officers monitoring the hallways and all those other things.
Thank you.
Any other comments from board members? Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address this item? Morning, sir.
I'm Joe Offer from Placer People of Faith Together. We haven't really had a chance to discuss this plan, so instead of speaking for a Placer People of Faith, let me speak for myself. I've worked for 30 years as a federal investigator, and I've visited most of the correctional facilities in the state of California. Visiting Placer County Jail for the first time, I had the impression that this was a very crowded facility. When a jail is crowded, it's dangerous both for the inmates and for the staff. The proposed facility seems to solve a lot of that problem. However, I'm concerned that we seem to be looking at the Fed cap as a target rather than looking at the designed capacity of our correctional facilities. So I think we need to, the Fed cap, the maximum population set by the consent decree is the danger line. It's not the optimum capacity of the jail. Looking at the current jail, I would say the capacity is about 400, and we're keeping about 600 people in that jail. So I'd like to keep that design capacity in consideration. We don't want to overcrowd the new jail. The other thing is, we don't want to sacrifice alternative sentencing, we don't want to sacrifice treatment programs for alcoholism, drugs, and so forth. But otherwise, I think I would support this plan.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to address the board on this item? Mr. Hesch.
Good morning. I'm Tony Hesch from Colfax. Just have one question that perhaps isn't central to approving this or not, but I'm interested in the early release. From a citizen's standpoint, more than anything else, if I'm hearing this correctly, we're importing the worst of the worst, or at least very, much more difficult and dangerous people into our local jail system. And then are we releasing them here at the back door in Auburn, or are we releasing them back to where they came from? And I think if we're releasing them here in Auburn, perhaps the community should be maybe more aware of, and my community in Colfax would be interested, I'm sure. We're really importing some bad situations coming to our town, and is that really what we're also hearing? So I'll leave that to anybody to answer. Thank you.
So, Captain, what is a criteria when someone from the prison population is released to counties, to the counties? How does that work?
There's a bit of a public misconception that nobody's being transferred directly from state prison to our county jail, so that might clarify his question right there. These are all people who have committed offenses here locally in Placer County, whether they're a resident here or not, it's irrelevant. They've committed offense here in Placer County, they've gone through our criminal justice system, and they've been sanctioned by the courts to serve a sentence. Now, if they meet the requirements under AB 109, it's just that now, no longer do they go to state prison, they serve that in our county jail. And the jail was originally designed, and it always been, that you only served one year in jail. Well, now we have somebody in our jail for eight years, four months is our longest sentence. So obviously, that creates a capacity issue, and we have to release people for that federal court order. We obviously, you know, he was talking about the worst of the worst, we try to release the best of the worst. We have some strict guidelines and some criteria that our classification unit works through to determine who we release, so we minimize the impacts to public safety the best we can.
So they're released on probation?
No, they're either, if they're pre-trial, they're given a Promise to Appear, you know, you commonly probably know it as like a citation with a court date, and if they're sentenced, they're just considered time served, they're done with their sentence.
Is there any time when the released prisoners come into our jail system, is there any time that they go back to prison?
As far as maybe violations and things like that?
Yeah, if there was a violation.
Yes, and we still have, you know, the convictions that don't meet the requirements of AB 109 that are violent, sexual, those kind of things, we're still routinely sending people to prison every week. It's just the ones that fall into the non-non-non category are now staying with us. You know, I think the majority of our sentences are anywhere from two to four years, that's where the bulk of our AB 109 impacts are in those sentences.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Durant, you have it.
Yeah, Mr. Hesch, I would encourage you to speak with Marshal, our Chief Probation Officer. They're, having represented the Department of Corrections in a past life, there is a very complicated matrix on how folks are released due to certain circumstances. Marshal can explain how the process goes now that we have the AB 109 piece, so.
Supervisor Ullrich.
Yeah, just to clarify your last point there, you said it's those that meet the non-non-non criteria, and it's nonviolent, nonsexual, and what's the third?
Non-serious.
I'm sorry?
Non-serious.
Non-serious. Which I always think is an interesting.
Yeah.
We won't go there.
We won't go into what qualifies under those categories.
But just to clarify, that's in their last offense for which they're being sentenced, so they might have a history of previous, either sexually aggressive behavior or violent behavior, but it's on their most recent crime for which they are being tried that that judgment is made, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So to think that these aren't somehow people who have issues would be wrong. And then also, just for general consumption, we are receiving from the state under AB 109 somewhere along the lines, approximately, when we broke this down by inmate, I believe it was somewhere in the neighborhood of $17,000 to $20,000 a year equivalent from the state in compensation, is that, and I realize that's a system-wide, which includes our probation and all the rest, but I believe it was somewhere in the neighborhood of $17,000 a year. Does that sound about right?
Haven't broken it down that way, but.
And that was, that was under our last transfer when we had, of state payments to the counties, when we had compared that the counties, when we had compared that against the AB 109 population we were going to be asked to absorb. I had simply run the numbers, and just by way of comparison, I believe that right now the state is spending, is it $54,000 a year per person that they are incarcerating, somewhere in that neighborhood, $50,000 plus thousand dollars a year. So just for folks to get a sense of what it is, we are trying to deal with. The state in handling these very same kinds of people have historically spent on average of $50,000 a year plus, and they handed us about $17,000 a year in order to deal with these same people. So that's what rolls downhill, if you will, when you're the counties. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from board members? Anyone else in the audience wish to address this item? Please come forward. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Dana Burst. I'm a resident in North Auburn. Thank you to all of the sheriffs that do great work, and to our board members here. I had just one question that I didn't hear answered. Of the people who you release to be returned, and I'm at a loss for the technical terms, how many of those actually show up in court, and how many do not?
Are you talking about the early fed cap releases? I don't have those statistics with me.
That would be an interesting statistic to find out, how many are actually showing up, because there could be more that could be released. The facilities do look like they are antiquated, but we are in an economic downturn with lots of needs, so thank you for asking.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the board on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for action approval.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know specifically. I mean, I'm looking at the item as agendized. I don't know what specifically we're being asked to do. In terms of providing direction, I think that staff working with the sheriff's department has done an admirable job of solving what was a fairly substantial problem year one and ongoing by making a number of suggestions that have resulted in some operational efficiencies. And I know that our sheriff will continue to look for those opportunities as they present themselves, and so I say we move forward and make God be with us as we do this.
Is that a motion?
Well, I, again, I don't see that we're being asked...
I'd be happy to clarify what board directions we're seeking. We are seeking approval for the sheriff's proposal for transitioning into South Placer. We are also seeking approval for the funding plan for South Placer, and with that approval, then staff would take, would make the required expenditure and funding adjustments to the sheriff's proposed 1314 budget.
Ready.
Then so moved, yes.
Okay. So it moved in second to approve the item just stated. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you all for your hard work in bringing this forward to us, and good luck.
Five-minute break, or you guys can...
Does the board care for a five-minute break before we move to our next item?
Yes.
You want a five-minute break before we move to our next item, or I'm good, but...
No.
No, I'm fine. No, let's get this over. I mean, let's move on. Okay, we're going to move forward then. I want to thank you all for your indulgence and patience as we move through our agenda. And now we will move to our 10:30 timed item, Facility Services. We have Item 3A, Midwestern Placer Regional Sewer Project and Applegate Regional Sewer Project Updates, and then Item 3B, Sewer Maintenance District One and Applegate Sewer Maintenance District, Maintenance and Operation Fees Increases. So...
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Jim Durfee, Director of Facility Services, I want to provide a brief introduction to the items that your board's going to consider today. First, staff will be providing you with a very brief update on the status of both the Applegate Regional Project and the, what we'll call the Mid-Placer Regional Project, and give you an update on where we are today. This all harkens back over the last several years, probably during the course of my career, this is maybe the most discussed item that I've been involved in, is the Regional Sewer Project. Some 14 months ago, your board gave direction for us to proceed with the Midwestern Placer Regional Project, and since then, we've made really substantial progress on that project. You'll recall that over the summer last summer, your board authorized a, what we called a Design and Environmental Review Agreement that provided funding to proceed with those two parts of the project. The environmental review is nearing completion right now. The draft EIR has been circulated, and the final EIR is being prepared as we speak. Design is at approximately 90% on that pipeline project and the expansion of Lincoln's Treatment Plant. We are through the preliminary part of our financial discussions with the state revolving fund in terms of putting together the loan package that would end up providing the upfront funding for this. And the discussions for an ongoing operations agreement with the city of Lincoln for how the project will work are progressing very well, and we're making great progress on this. So over the upcoming months, should your board continue to support the project, over the upcoming months, we will be completing all of those things that I just talked about, and we are essentially on schedule to keep working on the project as the schedules were presented to your board last year. The next step is the step that we're here to talk about today, which is to have your board consider increases to the fee structure that'll provide the financial background and structure for us to make debt service on the project as we move forward. I'm going to turn the program over to Bill and Dave here momentarily for the technical aspects of the program, but you've got your staff in the room to answer questions. We have, as you can see, an awful lot of interest from the community for this hearing today, and we're here to provide any information that your board requires in order for us to continue to move along the process. So with that, I'm going to turn the microphone back over to Bill Zimmerman. We're going to walk you through a brief update on the Applegate and Mid-Placer projects, and then we'll dive into the public hearing process. So with that, Bill?
Good morning, Chairman, all members of the board. Bill Zimmerman with Facility Services. I have Dave Atkinson with me this morning. Also want to introduce Kathy Kane, who is going to be assisting us with tallying protest votes. What we'd like to do this morning, like Jim mentioned, is give you an update on the Applegate Regional Sewer Project, also an update on the Midwestern Placer Regional Sewer Project. At the end of that update, we'll answer any questions that your board may have, and then we'll be ready to move into asking you to consider raising the monthly maintenance and operation fees in those two districts to fund the Midwestern Placer Regional Sewer Project. So at this point, I'm going to turn things over to Dave and let him walk you through that background.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, appreciate the opportunity this morning to report to you on two of the county sewer regionalization projects. To start my report this morning, I thought it would be helpful to start out with a map of the two areas that we're going to be talking about this morning. The first one is in the red. Let's see if that'll show up. Maybe, hard to see. The red area represents Sewer Maintenance District Number One, which was formed in the early 60s, originally to serve the North Auburn area, has expanded, also includes the Bowman area, Christian Valley, and now Winchester. The area in the purple or the magenta in the upper right-hand corner is the Applegate County Service Area, which serves the small community of Applegate, and I'll be talking to you a little bit more about that as my presentation proceeds. So Applegate County Service Area, formerly known as County Service Area 28, Zone 24, was established in 1973. It is one of the five service areas that provides sewer service that include both sewer and until very recently wastewater treatment. It includes about two miles of pipeline and a lift station. It currently serves 27 connections with a total of 38 equivalent dwelling units. Just as a reminder, an equivalent dwelling unit is an approximation of the wastewater generated by a single-family residence. For commercial, that's charged based on plumbing fixtures. Just for reference, of certain units such as mobile homes, things like that are charged a slightly lesser fee than one. Those 27 connections of a total of 38 equivalent dwelling units in Applegate are comprised of approximately 14 residential EDUs, excuse me, 24 residential EDUs and 14 commercial EDUs that include a motel, a church, the firehouse, and a community center. Staff estimates the buildout of the Applegate Service Area to be about 400 EDUs. The Applegate Treatment Plant was constructed in 1974 and is regulated by the Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board. The capacity of that system was reached in 1985, and no new connections have been allowed since that time. Due to the small customer base relative to the cost of providing treatment, the Applegate Sewer Service Area has had to rely on county general fund contributions over the years. It has an annual revenues of approximately $36,000, and last year's annual expenses were $100,000. Over the years, unpermitted winter surface water discharges have resulted in repeated enforcement actions by the Central Valley Water Board, which ultimately resulted in a 2006 Administrative Civil Liability Settlement Agreement that required the county to do three things. In addition to paying $16,000 of a $300,000 fine, we had to implement an interim solution to divert wastewater to storage tanks and then truck the wastewater off-site for treatment during the winter months. This added an additional cost of operations of about $55,000 per year, and then design, construct, and implement a permanent solution to connect Applegate to Sewer Maintenance District Number One. So as part of that settlement, staff with your board's approval executed the Applegate Regional Sewer Projects, which consisted of a pump station located in Applegate, approximately five and a half miles of pipeline to connect Applegate to the SMD-1 collection system in Winchester in order to convey flows for treatment at the SMD-1 Treatment Plant. Also part of the project will include the payment of connection fees from the Applegate CSA to SMD-1 as their contribution for their impacts on the treatment plant at the SMD-1 site. Total project cost was $7.7 million, and that was funded through a combination of federal grants, and then a county general fund contribution, and a county general fund-backed loan. I'm pleased to report to your board that the construction of the project is substantially complete. Wastewater is now being pumped from the Applegate Sewer Service Area to the SMD-1 Treatment Plant for treatment, and staff anticipates bringing back to your board a request to annex the Applegate Sewer Service Area into SMD-1 later this fall. SMD-1 was formed in the 1960s to provide sewer service for the North Auburn area, also the areas of Bowman, and as I mentioned, now serves Christian Valley and Winchester. It's comprised of approximately 100 miles of pipeline and 20 individual lift stations. It serves a population of approximately 15,000 and is comprised of about 5,300 residential equivalent dwelling units and 2,600 commercial and industrial equivalent dwelling units. Any revenues from all sources in the SMD-1 budget are approximately $8 million, and it's funded through user fees and does not receive general fund support for its annual operations and maintenance expenses of $6.4 million. Plant One, the treatment plant that serves the SMD-1 Service Area, was constructed in 1961, has a permitted capacity of approximately 2.2 million gallons, and currently treats about 1 million, 1.7 million gallons per day on an average dry weather basis. Also regulated by the regional board in 2010, Plant One was issued a new permit that required compliance with more stringent discharge limits. This new permit requirement, combined with the age of the Plant One facility, resulted in the need for a replacement to the wastewater treatment facilities in order to continue treatment for the SMD-1 Service Area. In March of 2012, your board directed staff to pursue an offer from Lincoln to regionalize the SMD-1 Treatment Plant in order to achieve long-term regulatory compliance. That project consists of decommissioning the existing SMD-1 Treatment Plant, constructing about 13 miles of pipeline for wastewater to be pumped from a pump station that would be constructed on the SMD-1 site, and also included expansion of the Lincoln wastewater plant to provide capacity for the existing SMD-1 and Applegate wastewater flows. County staff working cooperatively with Lincoln and its consultants have made tremendous progress over the last 14 months, and is pleased to report that the draft environmental impact report has been circulated for public review and comment, and is currently scheduled to have a hearing on a final environmental impact report by the Lincoln City Council at the end of this month. 30% design was completed a few months ago, and county staff has already begun review of the 90% plans for the wastewater treatment plant, and we expect to receive the 90% plans and specifications for the pipeline and the lift station later this week. Financing, which is planned to be done through an SRF revolving fund loan, SRF has already approved the creditworthiness for this project and given approval for a $76 million loan. Staff's finalizing the technical reports for submission, and will also be submitting the environmental and design once those are complete. In terms of agreements with Lincoln, as you may recall, your board in August of 2012 approved the Design and Environmental Review Agreement with the city of Lincoln, which is the agreement under which both, all of the above work has been working, being done under, and staff anticipates bringing back to your board in August of this year the construction and initial operations agreement, which will fund the construction and then the ongoing operation and maintenance of the regional sewer project. The total estimated project cost for the regional project is at $76 million. This includes a $73 million offer from Lincoln, as well as county's internal staff and consultant costs. That $73 million payment to the city of Lincoln includes a $7 million payment to Lincoln for oversizing in their collection system and in their treatment plant, and Lincoln has also agreed to use this as additional contingency for the project. Long-term financing, as I mentioned, is being handled through a state revolving fund loan. The terms that we are seeking are 30-year term. Current estimate of the interest rate is 1.9% interest. Included in that financing package from the state includes a $6 million principal forgiveness, and we intend to repay this through SMD-1 user fees, which is why we're here this morning to present to you the monthly maintenance and operation fee increase to go from $82 to $95.78, which will be necessary in order to fund not only the ongoing operations and maintenance of the regional project and the SMD-1 system, but also to fund the debt repayment of this loan for this project.
And that concludes our presentation for Item 3A. If there's questions on either of those projects, we'd be happy to answer those at this point in time. If not, we're happy to move into Item 3B, which is the request to consider the maintenance and operation fee increases for both of those sewer districts.
Supervisor Duran?
Yeah, I just want to, just want to clarify and be very clear on what we're here for and what we're not here for. We've already made the decision to go regional, correct? We're just here to talk about rate increase.
You're correct.
Correct. Thank you.
Supervisor Montgomery?
Thank you. I just wanted to get a clarification on some of the numbers relating to EDUs. Applegate, I believe you said there were 38 EDUs currently, and full build-out for that area is estimated at 400?
That's with the completion of the project.
Right, understood. And then on SMD-1, there's currently 7,900 EDUs?
Correct.
And what would full build-out would, you know, down the line be for that?
Full build-out is approximately 19,000 EDUs, which would bring us to an average dry weather flow of about 4.2 million gallons per day on an average basis.
Okay, thank you.
And if I could put a little bit finer point on that, both of those numbers, both the Applegate number and the SMD-1 number are predicated on existing general plan capacities. Neither the Applegate project or the SMD-1 project contemplates any zoning changes or any other kinds of density changes. It was simply to accommodate existing plans.
Supervisor Ullrich.
Yeah, and Jim, perhaps along those lines. And I appreciate the clarification. What growth assumption, however, is, if you could jump back to the previous slide, Slide 8, where we're showing the fee increase, that has to be driven, given the repayment, there are certain assumptions in there in terms of new connections and new users paying that fee. What in the, in the areas that you just identified that are going to be subject to that fee, what are the growth assumptions that have worked into the calculation in order to achieve that level of payback?
Good question. I'll defer that to staff, but you're absolutely correct. There are growth assumptions in the model. the model.
So part of the growth assumption that actually was submitted to state revolving fund was 120 EDU growth per year?
I'm sorry?
120 EDUs per year?
120, over our baseline of?
7,900 and some change.
Okay.
That's a long-term average. Now, to go along with that, part of the credit package that we submitted to SRF also included a rate coverage, so we have to collect just a little bit more than we would otherwise have to, to make sure that we're covered if that growth doesn't occur. The other part of the SRF credit package that we submitted included the need to essentially put away in a restricted reserve account one year's debt service. So there's two, if you will, fallback positions in the event that growth doesn't occur in a single given year, but that 120 is well below the 150 EDUs that we experienced a long-term average over the previous 15 years.
Okay, and the $95.78 that is being proposed is based on our purchase of existing capacity of 1.7 million gallons per day?
That's correct. So the project includes a pump station and a pipeline?
Right.
And then, treatment plant capacity at the City of Lincoln for existing 1.7 million gallons per day.
Okay. And there's nothing in that number, or is there anything in that number, for the additional capacity that will have to be purchased in order to meet what we are projecting by way of those growth assumptions that we have to meet in order to make this payback?
That's correct. Part of what's happening right now between the City of Lincoln and the county is we're actually working on a joint connection fee study to determine what the appropriate connection fee is to charge those new customers as they come in, to make sure that they're paying their appropriate share of these improvements, and then also, once they come online, then they will start paying this user fee, and that's all been included in this model.
Okay. So that connection fee, then, is what would be collected for the additional capacity, for the purchase of the additional capacity?
That's correct, and we anticipate that there'll be a component that will cover the treatment plant, a future treatment plant expansion at the City of Lincoln, and then also a small component to deal with local collection system issues in the SMD-1 area.
Okay. Current connection fees that we charge, and again distinguishing between annexations and connections, those already within the district, current connection fees that we charge at SMD-1 are?
Current connection fee for SMD-1 is $8,057 per equivalent dwelling unit.
Okay. Do we have any kind of guesstimate as to where that number goes under the new scenario?
As I mentioned, we're working on the connection fee study. I can tell you that the, let me get my hands on it here, the connection fee estimate that we provided to your board back in March of 2012, when we presented this item to your board, was $10,500.
So then, just to be clear, in addition to the almost 20% increase in the monthly fee that we're looking at, we're looking at about a 25% increase in connection fees within the district for new connections?
That's our best estimate until we get that connection fee study done, Supervisor.
Okay. Thank you.
Couple of questions. I just wanted to know how many communities in the region are served by SMD-1. I know Applegate is now connected to SMD-1, Winchester is connected to SMD-1, Bowman Community, we put some pump stations in over there, just did a big project, North Auburn, and the City of Auburn part of the airport, is that part of the?
That's correct Supervisor. The City of Auburn's airport is actually an SMD-1 customer. That's done through an agreement essentially between the county and the city to provide service to that.
Am I missing any of the other communities that are connected?
Christian Valley would be the only one I could think of, sir.
Christian Valley, right. So there's six communities in the region that are connected to SMD-1.
That's correct.
And then, just to be clear, on December 6th of 2011, we had the opportunity to follow the SOMAS design, and we had raised the rates prior to that in order to have almost $10 million in reserve in case there was a shortfall in connections moving forward. So that was one of the reasons why we qualified for $6 million in forgiveness. Am I correct in my recollection of that?
That's right Supervisor. Rates were raised in 2009 from $67.84 to the $82.
And that was for us to go ahead and upgrade and expand?
That was for a compliance project, that's right Supervisor.
Thank you. Just want to be clear on that. Any other questions from board members? So this is a public hearing. I'm going to open up the public hearing to receive. What? Oh, I'm sorry.
We actually have more definitive discussion of the proposed rate increases and the public hearing, so I think we're ready now to transition from the first background item into the actual meat of that discussion.
So you want to move forward before we open up the public hearing, is that correct?
I believe, Mr. Chairman, what staff is noting is the difference between 3A and 3B. 3A was just the information, I believe that we reserved.
That's correct.
Is actually the public hearing, but I think staff has a background report on that.
That is correct.
Okay, we're going to go to Item 3B then, correct? Keep on track here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The specific actions we're asking your board to take this morning are to conduct a public hearing to receive comments and consider protests regarding increasing the monthly maintenance and operation fee in Sewer Maintenance District One and the Applegate Sewer County Service Area from $82 to $95.78 per EDU to finance the Midwestern Placer Regional Sewer Project. We're asking you to adopt an ordinance adjusting MNO fees included in Section 13.12.350 of the Placer County Code. We're asking you to make a finding pursuant to Section 21080B8 of the Public Resource Code, that the higher fees are derived directly from the cost of providing service and are necessary to meet operating expenses and are therefore exempt from environmental review. And lastly, we're asking you to direct staff to assess monthly MNO fees of $95.78 per EDU in SMD-1 and the Applegate Sewer CSA in order to finance the regional sewer project exclusively through user fees. So this next slide provides a breakdown of both the existing and the proposed MNO fees, and you can see that in each of those fees, we have money set aside for the operation and maintenance of the collection system. That's the pipeline that we have in the ground, about 100 miles of it. It's the 18 lift stations that we have in SMD-1. And in addition to the collection system costs, there's also money set aside for the operation and maintenance of the existing treatment plant on Jirga Road. And then you can see, as you were asking earlier, about the contribution that we've been putting away from the last rate increase into reserves to fund a regulatory compliance project. The proposed fee includes the same costs for the collection system operation and maintenance. It also includes costs for the operation and maintenance of the regional project components, the pump station at the existing SMD-1 Treatment Plant Site, the pipeline from that site down to Lincoln, and then the additional capacity that we'll be constructing at Lincoln's Treatment Plant. And then at the bottom, you can see there's also a $29.25 payment to the SRF, basically paying off our loan. Here you can see how the existing and proposed fees compare to other districts in the area, and what this slide really shows is that in the larger districts down towards the valley floor, the costs are typically cheaper, and as you start working your way up into the foothills, the districts get smaller. You also have the challenge of having to pump up and over hills to move your wastewater, and so as a result of those two things, you see the costs start to creep up. As we've talked about this project over the last few months and years, we've had a number of discussions about the potential to use outside funding as a way to reduce the rates that are charged back to our customers, and so we wanted to provide you with a couple of scenarios here this morning. The first is a one-time contribution of $7.4 million. That would be equal to annual payments of $317,000, and this scenario basically represents the amount of federal grant funding that the county has received and used for other regionalization projects. The second scenario that we have is kind of what it would take to reduce the monthly MNO fee to below $90, and that would take a one-time contribution of just under $14 million, or an annual contribution of $600,000. And then we've provided at the bottom of the slide there a relationship between the amount of annual outside funding and what that would do to the monthly MNO fee, so that we can come up with any scenario that your board would like. In terms of public noticing, we mailed out individual letters to each of our customers back in March of 2013, letting them know what we were doing, that we were proposing to raise their fees, why we were proposing to raise their fees, and what the process was for them to participate in the process, how they could go about filing a protest and walking them through that process. In April and May, we made presentations to the North Auburn MAC, the Weimar Applegate Colfax MAC, and the Meadow Vista MAC. We also attended a number of other community meetings to talk about the project, the fee increase, and again, to let people know how they could participate in the process. All of that leading up to today's hearing, where we're asking you to consider the fee increase. Approval of the fee increase today will allow us to move forward and bill the fees through the tax rolls and save our customers the cost of having to do a separate mailing, and should your board choose to approve the fee increase today, those fees will take effect on July 1st, 2013. Proposition 218 does include provisions for a majority protest, and so on this slide, we simply wanted to provide you with the number of EDUs per district. The threshold for a majority protest is half of the EDUs plus one additional EDU, so we've provided the threshold there. And then we've also included the number of protests that we've received through last Friday. That number has gone up today, and people can, our customers can, submit protests through the end of today's public hearing, and at the end of the hearing, we'll ask the clerk of the board to provide the final count. So with that, again, these are the actions that we're asking your board to take this morning. The first three will set the fee at $95.78, and that will provide the state revolving fund with the assurances they need to complete our funding. As I mentioned, it'll also let us move forward with billing. The last action that we're asking you to do, your board could choose to reduce the fee that's charged to the customer by applying outside funding to the project. Absent that direction, we're asking you to, for direction, to assess the full fee of $95.78. And at this point, I would turn it back to you for the public hearing.
All right. I'll now open the public hearing. Any comments from board members before we open it up to Supervisor Wiegand?
Bill, if the board, one of the options and issues we've discussed in the past is potential contribution that the board might want to make from general funds to offset the cost increase, as it relates to the tax bill and the maximum worst-case rate that are targeted today, when, what's the timing by which the board can make that decision, and what impact would that have on the fall tax rates?
It would really depend on how you wanted to make that contribution. If you wanted to make an annual contribution, we would ask that you go ahead and set the fee at the $95.78, and then we could actually plug that contribution in and assess a lower fee to our customers. We probably have a couple of weeks to do that and still make it out on the tax rolls if it comes in after that. We would either have to do a separate billing, or we could actually come back and credit them the following year. I believe we could do that. I'd have to check with council.
Supervisor Montgomery?
Thank you. And, Bill, as you know, the question came up yesterday about a phased-in approach on the $13.78, you know, the question being, could the county phase it in, you know, X dollars this year, or X plus some more the next year, in getting us to that amount? So I guess the question that I would have is, if that were a possibility, what would that mean to the overall repayment costs on the project? Would that mean that it would be more than $13.78 per EDU at the end of that phased-in process?
It would, because if you took that fee and phased it in over two years, there's going to be a component, a chunk of that $13.78 that you're not collecting, that you would then have to make up on the backside, so the overall fee would be higher.
And do we know that, so SRF is basically saying, we need to guarantee that we're going to see this money paid back if we loan it to you, hence the fee increase. Would a phased-in approach, do you think, I'm sure you didn't have time between yesterday afternoon and this morning, do you think that a phased-in approach would meet the requirements for the SRF for that guarantee?
I believe we could craft a phased-in approach that would meet their requirements and give them the assurances they need to approve our funding.
And, again, I guess getting to Supervisor Wiegand's question, if the SRF loan did not come through, what other potential funding sources would exist to fund the project?
If the SRF funding did not come through, and I think that's a highly unlikely potential, I think at that point, we would take a step back and most likely talk with the county treasurer and look at running a financing through them.
I would speculate that at that point, we'd be looking at conventional financing, whether it be some sort of a COP or some other more conventional way to bring the money to the table, revenue bonds, those types of things, all of which, at this point in time, would be more expensive than the SRF loan.
And those repayments would still devolve to the rate payers in SMD-1?
Correct. They would have to be backed up by some sort of hard revenue or otherwise securitized, and then at some point, we have to pledge how we're going to pay the money back.
Okay, thank you.
And as far as the phased-in process, if we did that, we'd still have to do the Prop 218 every time.
You're correct. If we wanted to come back and have a higher fee, we would have to come back and go through this process again.
Okay. More staff time, more pain, more, okay, thanks. Any other comments from board members? Robert, your light is on, you have some more comments. Okay, now I will open it up to the public. We have some members of the public. Is there anyone from the City of Lincoln or anything, any that want to speak first before I open it up to the general public? Okay, seeing none, we will begin with our, I've got a list of speakers here. Before I ask everybody to line up, I know there's some people that are disabled, so I'm just going to call two names at this time, Mr. Sanchez, Jack Sanchez, and Dan Summle.
Jim, members of the board, I'm Jack Sanchez, I live in North Auburn, and I've had an opportunity to speak with four members of the board at some length, and I really appreciate you taking your time and your expertise. I've talked extensively with Jim Durfee, and I really appreciate the input. And before I continue, I want to say that I am a supporter of Placer County's government. I think it's the best county government we have in a state.
Thank you.
Okay. On this matter, however, there's much information, misinformation that's swirling around. This is a very complex issue, the pipeline to get our hands on, and I don't think that any vote that you take is a permanent vote. You can recall your vote anytime you want. And I recommend that the county, under the expertise of Jim Durfee, rebuild SMD-1 wastewater treatment plant, because I'm opposed to privatization, and I think the county knows best for what the voters in Placer County need, and they can sculpt it according to those needs. A pipeline must be paid for by North Auburn residents, not exclusively for their use. The pipeline will de-water Rock Creek and encourage development all along the pipeline. Pipelines are designed primarily for development. I live in North Auburn, and I own three homes on North Richardson between Dry Creek and Joga Road. I, I'm speaking as an individual. I am personally highly impacted by a development that will benefit many other people at my The pipeline will provide a means for Auburn to de-water ultimately the Auburn Ravine by removing its effluent to connect to this pipeline if you build it. So please reconsider your decision to build a pipeline which encourages development paid for by the few, me and my neighbors. This development encourages, this pipeline encourages development. This development encourages, this pipeline encourages development paid for by the few. It hurts fishes, and it creates the possibility, it hurts fishes in Coon Creek, because the streams that lead up to Coon Creek, and ultimately, what I'm most concerned with, it will hurt fishes in the Auburn Ravine. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Dan Sable? Is there Dan? Sable, okay. Sable, sorry.
Hi. My name's Dan Sable. I've been a property owner in this district for the past 22, 23 years. I have a rental property that I developed down on Edgewood Road, and I have three parcels on approximately one acre with seven connections. My current rate fee is around almost $6,000 a year. The increase will bring that to another $1,300 a year approximately for my tenants, which are mostly elderly, and you know all the problems with, the problems us old people have with keeping up with the times and the dollars and all that. I've not raised any of my rents for the past four years, just because of the economic situation we're all facing. Mainly, I don't like to have a vacancy. Most of my tenants of the seven, more than half of them have been there in excess of 10 years. So I try and keep a good program going and try and keep it good for everybody. When I received the notice of this meeting and the possibility of doing a protest to the fees, the part that scared me of the whole thing was the fact that in the future, probably in the near future, whenever this goes into operation, of the fact that there's no guarantee on what our fees are going to be. The fees are open-ended someplace, and, you know, based on the past, this Board of Supervisors has approved, by what I read in the newspaper, everything from this sewer district that's come before them in this timeframe of the last 20 years. It may be time to look at options. I don't know, but I'm just trying to protect my personal interest and the interest of my tenants. So whatever's best for everybody is what I'm for, but I hate to be a protester, but I'm just trying to protect myself from what may or may not happen.
You'll have to pass these costs on to your tenants.
Pardon me?
You'll have to pass these costs off to your tenants, is that what you're trying?
Absolutely. I have to raise it this year, whether I want to or not, and suffer any consequences of the increases, but it's strictly personal and for my tenants. With that in mind, I appreciate your service. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dan. Mrs. Wagner, Norman Wagner?
Thank you for being here, and I'm happy to be here with you. I have had the experience of being a mayor of a city, and I understand the complications that you folks have, and the complications that the sewer system has, but I think there might be a leak somewhere. I'm just not sure where. But there seems to be a lot of water flowing. I know that I'm paying $1,000 a year for water, and I have a little 1,200-square-foot house. And I'm wondering, when I was mayor, one of the things that we made sure of was that anybody that moved into town, i.e. Del Webb, they paid their share for the damage that they were going to cause to a system that was already existing. And I'm wondering if Mr. Duffy or somebody, Doofy? Durfee? Thank you, Durfee, could tell me how much they paid when they moved in?
I believe, as Dave mentioned earlier, we do have a developer mitigation fee or a connection fee, and so anytime development occurs, whether it's a single house or large subdivisions, they're subject to those same fees. That fee is calculated to cover the full cost of providing new service to that house or group of houses. So our fee is set up to do that. If you're referring to development that took place in Lincoln, I'm not, I'm probably not the best person to address that question. I can tell you that Lincoln has a fee structure that is theoretically similar to ours. The dollar, the numbers are different, but developers pay their fair share there as well. So that is how those fees are structured.
Because they have 6,000 homes there, and before they came in, Lincoln was a small town with 2,000 or 3,000 people, and the sewer system was probably adequate at that point.
Correct. And I don't know all of the details of it, but there were development agreements down there that actually constructed the new treatment plant.
So all of our fees would go up, and then, of course, the interesting question is, once you get all this money and you build up all this infrastructure, will our rates go down?
No.
To me, that's a fair question. If you need the money, if you need the money to develop the system, then when you get the system developed, we should no longer be paying $1,000 a year, which is what I'm paying now.
Well, the bonds, the project we paid off in 30 years, so come back then, maybe.
I won't be here in 30 years.
I know. So I'm sorry.
Well, I think the board has to do what they have to do, but I'm certainly not happy about an increase. I'm hoping that we can find a way to work around it. Maybe we can have a bake sale or something, I don't know, but I think we need to find a better way to do it than to charge people who are already paying $1,000 a year, and most of us are. It's a lot of money. It's the highest thing. If we could raise that amount of money, okay, I'll be right with you. If we could raise that amount of money for the schools or for anything else, you know, we're talking millions and millions of dollars, and the Water District manages to do it, so maybe we need to figure out how they do it so that we can do that for the rest of the community, but thank you very much.
Thank you. And just, Mr. Durfee, just to clarify, if there is a development comes in, they do have to do a sewer study to make sure that their project, the impact they put on the sewer system is addressed as well, is that correct?
That's correct. There's an extensive mitigation process that we go through to assure that, and it's all paid for by the developer, to understand what their impacts into the system are, and I will tell you that North Auburn is an expensive place to develop, because the developers are having to do rehabilitation work to the pipelines and expand the pipelines to provide their capacity, so you're correct.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Wagner. Ms. Stallman, you're next.
My name is Gloria Stallman. I live in Woodside Village Mobile Home Park. We have 235 homes in the park. We're currently being billed, each homeowner on their monthly bill, $58.55 a month. Property owner pays nothing. And Jim, when I spoke to you last Friday about the property tax bill, I called Facility Services yesterday, and there are two property tax bills on the park. One for the new section that was built three or four years later after the rest of it. So the total of the sewer tax on those two property bills, tax bills, equals what we all pay, $165,111 a year. So our tax, sewer tax on the mobile home will go up over $9 a month. Some of you, that probably seems like not so much, but for senior citizens, it's a negative impact, and the property owner pays nothing. The homeowners pay it. I turned in 123 protest forms to you, Jim, last week. I turned in 18 more this morning, so that's 60% of the homeowners of our park protesting. Supervisor Montgomery, you represent North Auburn. We would appreciate it if you would support your constituents and deny this tax increase, because many of them are senior citizens. And we don't have any discretionary effort on this tax. We have to pay it. And if the social security increase goes through, which is chain CPI, that means nothing. We get nothing. So we don't have an annual COLA we can rely on, and if you increase this tax on us, it's really going to be negative for us. So I appreciate you denying the tax increase. Thank you.
Just to be clear, so the property owner gets billed for the sewer tax, but he bills you in your rental statement?
Yes. Every month, it's a separate item for the sewer tax on our monthly bill. We all pay it, so the property owner pays nothing on the sewer tax.
So you have a base rent, and then the sewer is added into that?
Yeah, that's extra.
If this is approved, that's going to go up?
That's right. Over $9 a month. Thank you.
Thank you.
And also, to be clear, this is a fee. It's not a tax. It shows up on your property tax.
I'm sorry. You all consider it a fee?
You may feel free to disagree with me, and I'm encouraged.
Okay, I want to bring this board back.
I will show you the same respect that I hope you'll show me. Fees, just so people understand, are for services. In this case, the service is your sewer disposal, your maintenance and operation, and the existing structure of the sewers. So while I share your frustration with the amount of taxes and fees that we all pay, I do just want to make very clear that this is not a tax by any definition. It's a fee. You don't have to like it. I'm not telling you to like it. I just do want to be clear in the language.
Okay. Mr. Ferber?
And I'm just going to be very clear, all right, that I'm subject to having increased fees down where I live in Roseville. Whenever they want to raise fees for electricity or water or whatever, I'm subject to that as well, all right? I really want to caution everybody to stay focused on the big picture here, all right? We've spent a lot of time, 12 years, in making this decision, and we're talking about a rate increase. Now, you've talked about the piece of the rate increase that comes because we have to raise rates. What we haven't heard, and what you haven't heard, is why we have to do that. And it's because of the fees and the cost to eliminate a lot of new things that the State Department of Water Resources is placing on us to do that, all right? It's not something that we want to do, and we spend a lot of our time and a lot of our capital looking at the different alternatives. I respect everything that you have to say, and you have your right to be here, but please understand that we've got limits of what we can do, all right?
Mr. Ferber? Robert Ferber? Robert Ferber still here? Paul Brewer? And then Mrs. Webb, what's next? Next, don't get up now.
Supervisors, staff, frustrated members of residents of SMD-1, good afternoon. I'm a resident of North, longtime resident of North Auburn in the SMD district, and looking at the FAQ paper that was put out by the county, says what happens if there's a majority protest, which unfortunately, there wasn't. It said, you know, the Board of Supervisors can't raise the fee, and it said, had that happened, the Board of Supervisors will need to identify an additional outside funding source to pay for the regional sewer project, or pursue a project to be completed within the existing rate structure. So that looks to me like if you voted this rate increase down, I think we could go with something a little bit more reasonable. I'd really like to, I'm very frustrated to start with, because I think this is a fore-drawn conclusion, but I'd really like to urge a little bit of common sense and a whole lot of austerity, because, you know, the seven out in front of this project doesn't look too bad, but boy, when you put seven zeros behind it, I start having a real fuzzy problem in my head dealing with those kinds of numbers. As I see it, we're looking at about a $15,000 to $20,000 lien against my property, basically, to pay for this project over the next 30 years. And I think if I had lien on my property, I really should have had some say on that lien being imposed, because that's basically what it is. That's figuring, you know, 5,000 connections and 70 million bucks for this thing. And, you know, as I read through this material, this rate increase that's proposed here, however, is to cover cost and initial operations, final rate to be determined. That scares the hell out of me. I know we're going to have cost overruns. I mean, there's no way that we're not going to. We factor all that in, everything else that goes into this thing, you know, the end is nowhere in sight. And, you know, I'm of restricted means, but not limited means, and I feel terribly sorry for these people that are of, on very limited means as to what this is going to do to them, because it's going to be a choice between whether you flush the toilet or go buy a bag of dog food to eat. So with that, I'd urge you to not impose this, and let's go back, as it says in here, and look at something that we can afford that's really within our means. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Paul. And then Ken and Joellen Bezner are next.
My name is Rena Webb, and I live on Lilac Lane. We have lived there 46 years, and we have paid this rate increase every year since it started. And I do believe you deal with millions of dollars every day, and $1,000 doesn't mean much to you, but it is a burden to me and others that are on Lilac Lane. Many of us have lived there the 46 years and some more, and we have not increased our income like that, because as you see, I have increased my age. I don't say I'm elderly, but I'm 96 years old, and many of us have paid this fee. We've not said a word before, but I do say it now, because $1,000 has put a burden on many of us in our area. And we did pay a sewer fee and clean up Lilac Lane when we moved there. We had a dirt road, and we were on septic tanks, and then they put the pipes in, and we took 20 years to pay that off, and now we've started paying off more with the less income, and I do oppose this rate.
Thank you, Mrs. Webb. Ken and Joellen Bezner?
Morning. Good morning. Good morning. My name's Ken Bezner, and my wife and I own some property in Bowman area. I also have some property down in the East Bay. East Bay, my rates are about $20 a month, $250 a year. If we, I don't know if you could put the slide back up that compared the $28 down to $203 or whatever the rate was, but when you look at something, I was in construction for 40 years with BGE. When you look at shared sacrifice, or you look at a shared regional type of activity, it's usually a shared cost across the region. I don't see this as a shared cost across the region. You look at City of Lincoln at $32, you look at us, you're looking at $97 or $95. So I understand there was a rate increase in 2009, is that what I saw?
Yeah.
This, I think, if I read somewhere that this was only good for five years, and then Lincoln would propose something else, there was no given that this was not going to be unended at some time. There was no horizon on this one, so I'm totally against the fee increase. I think it's a burden on North Auburn, and I really agree with what I've heard so far of the, of actually redoing and reapplying the current sanitary system that you have here, and going back to something like that. I know this is not, not what this is about, it's the funding, but just the fact that the regional concept doesn't appear to work for me in this situation.
I have a couple of questions, sir. Do you have any idea what the deal points are on the regional?
Excuse me?
Do you have any idea what the deal points are on the regional plan?
Deal points?
Yeah. With Auburn, with the City of Lincoln?
I understand, from what I've read, is that there'd be a fee increase, and then after five years, whatever, Lincoln, it's only good for five years, is that what I'm understanding?
I'm asking you.
I don't know. I don't know. That's why I read that in the paper.
Do you have any idea on what the governance structure of the planned governance structure is?
No, I do not.
You have no idea?
No.
You have no idea on that?
No.
Do you understand whether or not it costs more to process water in the foothills as opposed to the valley? Yes or no?
I definitely realize that.
Okay. Is that a fact?
Yes, that's a fact.
Okay.
But.
That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Excuse me, I just want to say, we are already paying more because we're in foothills. We're paying a huge amount. We are already paying that.
Okay. Dennis Kennedy. And then Elliot Souza.
Yeah, my name's Dennis Kennedy. I'm mad as hell, you know? It's kind of crazy that, I don't see any options that, when I went to the meeting Thursday, were presented there on refurbishing the plant in Jirga Road period. It's, we're going with the pipeline. It's like we're too late. It's, sorry, it's all over, we got to pay this, or else. I don't see that we have an option. My 93-year-old great uncle, you know, he's, he doesn't have the income to spend for all this, but to rebuild the plant that several of these guys, I'm sure they're going to get up and speak about it, what happened to that option? It's not on the table anymore?
Sir, where have you been the last two years?
I was born and raised here. You're not even in this district, and I don't appreciate you being rude to the people that have a statement to make. You're not in the district.
And?
You are a supervisor for different people, but our supervisor made a decision, and the people are going to make a decision later on, you know?
Absolutely.
I don't mean to disrespect anybody.
I'm not trying to disrespect you, sir, at all. All I'm saying is that we've gone through this process for the last two years, and believe me, it was pretty exhausting. I think the last meeting that we had was, what, eight hours? On this particular issue, we had, we discussed this and the options over in?
That was December 6, 2011.
Cedar Building, right.
That was the first.
Well, I heard you say, that you've been working on it 12 years.
No, no, they have been working on it for 12 years.
Yeah, Mr. Kennedy, if I might address your concern, because I've heard that from a number of people, so I do want to make very clear why we're looking at a rate increase today rather than a decision on a project. The decision on the project was made by this board 14 months ago, after about 12 years of discussion leading up to that decision. I think we all sat through some fairly lengthy public meetings. I did hear the question, were they public? They absolutely were. They were very well noticed in the Auburn Journal. The Auburn Journal covered it extensively. We had hundreds of people in attendance at those meetings from all over the county, but predominantly from SMD-1. And so the reason, to answer your question just very directly, that we're not talking about a different project today is because this board made that decision 14 months ago.
So that's all over with?
That decision is all over with in terms of the decision that was made 14 months ago about what project to move forward on.
I heard you. So this gentleman here was saying that Applegate isn't even incorporated into the SDM-1 yet?
Yeah, they'll have to come to the board.
It's not necessarily incorporated, but yet it's being dumped into Jirga Road.
Yeah, it'll have to be.
All those systems, you got a 50-year-old treatment plant in Winchester and Applegate, and all that's been dumped in there. Yeah, it needs to be redone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
And my only, my comment at the beginning of this meeting, folks, was not for any disrespect for any of you all, all right? No, it wasn't.
Okay.
It was to understand what we are here to do. That was it.
Mr. Elliot Souza, and then Betty McReynolds.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to add some comments.
I'm sorry, Supervisor Wagon.
Thank you. Yeah, this has been an extraordinarily unusual issue in 19 years that I've been on the Board of Supervisors. I've frankly never seen anything like this, and I'm disappointed and saddened, actually, by the way this process has emerged. So I know there's a lot of public comment yet to be made, but I want to put some things out on the table now, so hopefully we can improve the health of the process. As has been mentioned, this issue has been discussed by the Board of Supervisors for 12, 15, maybe 19 years, depending on who's counting and how they're counting, and there continue to be an unprecedented number of comments that are blatant miscommunications of history and fact, and we continue to see that over and over again. So Supervisor Duran mentioned earlier, the discussion today is to talk about the rate increase. The decision as to whether or not, what option we choose as to requiring to upgrade our SMD-1 facility has already been made. It's been made 14 months ago. It was a two-year process that was very public that led to that, and even more than that. There was plenty of opportunity to present in front of the board and/or lobby us individually as to your preferences as to what option we chose. None of the options that we had available to us would have avoided or allowed us to not involve about $70 million in new debt. And so it's important to keep in mind, as we've considered these alternatives, what we know is the history for sure. What we're less certain of is the future, but the history shows unequivocally that the rates in 1990 for all ratepayers in Placer County were about $10 per month per household. So in the cities where they have large user bases, all of those rates are about $30 today. In the foothills, all of those rates today range from $60 to $111. They're much higher. Most of those cost increases have been, almost all of those cost increases have been the result of new regulation, new federal and state regulation for which we don't have the choice to comply. So the question only is to this Board of Supervisors, what is the best way to comply with future regulatory requirements, and what's the most cost-effective way to comply with new regulatory requirements, not only for today's ratepayers, but for the ratepayers 20 and 30 and 40 years down the road? Because you can believe that new regulation is not going to occur, I think that's absurd. If you do believe new rate regulation is going to occur and drive up those rates, then the best question to be asked is what's the best and most cost-effective way to comply with those new cost increases? And this board has decided to build a pipeline to Lincoln, to the facility that has the highest performance of any facility in South Placer in terms of rate compliance. Its rates are comparable to those of Rockland and Roseville, and that decision has been made. I'm amazed when I hear Jack Sanchez talk about de-watering when he knows on a daily basis there are ongoing discussions about buying makeup water in any and all of the systems. I'm amazed with anybody who says that they care about fisheries, talking about it being a good idea to have treated wastewater in a fishery environment, particularly the most sensitive part of that habitat. We're all sensitive to the rate increases that you all will have to bear. We're not insensitive to that at all. It's simply been a function of trying to compare alternatives in the scheme of state and federal regulation. And sadly, there continues to be a huge amount of miscommunication and misrepresentation of the facts, and that's the part that we need to get past. So I apologize for the speech at this point in time, but I hope that we can improve the public hearing as a result of it, Mr. Chair.
And I appreciate that, your comments, Robert, because, you know, Jen and I spent the better part of last Friday with the State Department of Water Resources, and they basically told us that the rate increases are coming, and the regulatory increases are coming, all right? And we're not insensitive. My frustration is that, you know, we are here trying to help the situation as the best possible way, and we will continue moving down the road to try to figure out solutions for you to make sure that we exercise our fiduciary duty over these rates as best we can. And it's just frustrating for me, knowing that there's a lot of misinformation out there of what our job was and what we have done, because that's my responsibility. That's what you elected me for, not you, but the folks down in District 1 elected me to make sure that these situations were dealt with in the best reasonable way. So that's what we're here to do. You know, I appreciate the fact that Robert is considering or is talking about adding something from an outside source. I mean, we were of the opinion that we would add an outside source and provide funding for the city of Auburn, and we offered them $7 million to come into the project. I've never been one to not want to consider additional ways that we can assist the ratepayers with the rate.
So let me ask the board, what is the benefit that these people receive? Can, Robert, can you tell me that, Supervisor Duran? Can you tell me what benefit that these people, the retired people in North Auburn, the low-income people in North Auburn, what is the benefit that they're going to receive out of building a pipeline to Lincoln?
Supervisor, I'm extremely disappointed with that question, because that's a question that we have been over with.
Extremely disappointed. The three supervisors are telling me what my ratepayers need, the people that I represent, the people that I've grown up with and I've gone to school with, I've gone to their funerals, I've worked on their cars. You're telling me what my ratepayers have to pay the people that I worked with for over 60 years.
Supervisor, I've been on the downside of votes many times. The difference between you and I is that I move on, all right? I say what I have to say. The board has made a decision, and if you don't like that decision, that's, I understand that. That's perfectly understandable.
All right.
And I get.
But I still don't know what the benefit is.
You want to pay for my house when I visit?
All right, stop. Okay, let's bring this back to the. Elliot Souza?
Wait a second, Mr. Chair, you asked a question of me specifically, and I want to give some perspective and provide for that. I also would want to echo Supervisor Duran's comments, because, again, this is a new experience after 18 years. But if electeds back in the early '60s made a decision to build a pipeline from North Auburn down to Lincoln to have their wastewater treated, today rates up here would be much cheaper than they are today. And so we're confronted with repeating history, which will likely provide, almost certainly provide, much higher rates to people 10, 20, 30 years down the road. Or we can do something different and something innovative and protect rate people, ratepayers today as best as we can, but also find better solutions for people in the future. Not only is it likely a tremendous insurance policy for ratepayers in the future, but it's much better for the environment, and as custodians of our natural resources, that is an equal obligation. And the fact of the matter is, because of state and federal regulation, we don't have any choice but to comply. It's only a function of how much it's going to cost and what strategy by which we're going to do that.
Go ahead, sir. I'm sorry that we had this little disruption.
Well, coming here to talk is, looks like it's a non-use thing. You guys have already made up your mind. Now, I'd like to know what is going to be the final cost? Have you got engineered plans and totals yet?
No.
Well, what is going to be the final cost?
We don't know.
Well, I guess it's not going to have a final cost, huh? This magical number you show up here is not going to work.
If I could, I'd like to answer your question. Back in 1990.
This is not, I don't care about 1990.
Excuse me. Back in 1990, the rates were about $10. Today, they're $82.50. So back in 1990.
I know, I've absorbed these rates every time you throw them at me.
And it's impossible to answer your question. The question, the only relevant, nobody knows what costs are going to be five years, 10 years, 15 years.
No, I'm talking about, when this pipeline is in, what is going to be the total?
The cost rates that we're considering today will cover the project cost for the period that's been discussed, which is a five-year period, based on exhaustive financial analysis.
How do you do the analysis when you don't have the plans yet?
You should come to some of our meetings and would be happy to.
No, I'd like to know. We don't have any engineers here that, you can't fit a job without final plans. You guys have given this job to Lincoln or whoever, and the plans have not been finalized. So there is no actual number out there, which will be an overrun anyway.
Again, actually, Lincoln has made us an offer that includes prices, and that is the.
What is the price?
You're hearing it today.
Okay, so you're going to lock them at 76 million?
We're locking in rates today.
The rate? Yeah. Okay, what is the final rate then? Is this the final rate to pay for this job? Or is the rate going to go up like the little sentence at the bottom?
Over time, the rates will.
Over time. I've absorbed overtime rates since 76. I know all about rate increases. I've absorbed them. But you guys are throwing out this number and this rate of $95. Why don't you tell the people the truth? It's going to be $120 to $130 a month once the job's in.
That's not true.
If I could interject, perhaps I can provide a little bit of clarity. There's been, as Supervisor Wagon said, there's been exhaustive analysis of the offer. The prices that were, the cost estimates that we're seeing come forward through the design process are in line with what the offer was. It's true that we won't know what the costs are until the project, the actual costs are until the project is bid and construction is complete. That's an absolute with any construction project. There are contingencies built into the offer that would, in our estimation, cover the normal kinds of things that you would see on this type of a project. And I can't give you a definitive yes or no on what a final cost is. Nobody can do that when they're constructing something. I can tell you that there's been, as Supervisor Wagon and I have both said, there's been exhaustive analysis of those costs.
Okay.
Oh, anyway, all this discussion is for naught, it looks like. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Huler?
I want to address this as one of the two supervisors who did vote against this particular I appreciate the passion that I'm hearing here today. If I had gotten my way, we wouldn't be having this particular hearing, but I didn't. And I want to, I take a little exception with some of the insinuations that are being made about the process and where we are here today. I don't like the fact that we're considering this. I don't like the fact that I lost, but I did, and so we're here. The board spent an awful lot of time in public hearings, a number of public hearings, over the years since I got back on at the end of 2006, discussing this issue, debating this issue, hearing public input about three project alternatives that were available to us. I truly wish some of the passion that's here in this room today had been here 14 months ago. We might be discussing a different alternative, maybe, maybe not, but this is where we are today. Agendized for us today is discussion about a rate increase, not a project alternative. We can't reset the table that way. So I don't necessarily always agree with my colleagues, they don't necessarily always agree with me. I've never questioned their motivation, and I'm not about to start today. So I just ask your respect that as we have this conversation, let's keep it relevant to the issue at hand. We understand that there are economic impacts associated with this decision. Every one of us understands that. We understand that it will create hardship for some people. Every one of us understands that as well. So let's have the conversation regarding what's actually agendized and not projects that we can't go back based on this board's previous action or revisit today. We'll have, we'll have a vote. We'll have a vote based on the rate increase, and what happens, we'll set forward our next steps along this project lines. And I encourage you, as we move forward as a county with other projects that will be significant, please provide this kind of input when it matters, when it, when we can take it, when we can do something with it, because. Because unfortunately, today is not the right time to be debating these projects. That was 14 months ago.
14 months ago, I was trying to think of living.
I appreciate, I appreciate that, sir. I truly do. As, as, as was I.
So I'm supposed to drive from Seattle down here to...
I...
You can't do it. I'm retired now.
Okay, we need to...
Okay.
Sir, please. All right, that's enough. We're going to bring it back. Betty McReynolds is next. Is she still here?
Here.
All ready? Mr. Nader, Wayne Nader.
Wayne Nader, North Auburn resident. I have three properties in, they're serviced by this facility, so I'm certainly impacted by the decision. I'm going to kind of modify some of the comments that I was going to make based on kind of where, obviously, you're trying to go with this. Rather than trying to justify where you are, I do appreciate the pain that you've gone through. I've experienced it with you because I've attended the hearings on this subject. And I think that it really comes down to, you made a decision, obviously, based on what you felt was in the best interest of the people that are in this district. And I know it's a painful one. I know it's an emotional one to the residents here. I, in listening to the discussions, I understand the reasons for making this type of decision. These are things that are forced upon us, as you've already stated. We don't have a choice. If I was to answer Chairman Holmes' question, what is the benefit to these people today? There's very limited benefit probably in the next five years, but the real benefit will be down the road, 10, 20, 30 years from now. And those residents at that time will look back at this decision as a very wise and prudent decision. We see where the rates are going. We know that is not going to change. The bureaucrats and the politicians in Sacramento will continue to crank out mandates, maybe I should say spew out mandates to us, that we have no choice but have to comply with. Those have substantial financial implications. So the decision that you made many months ago was a wise decision. I know it was very difficult and controversial amongst you as a Board, but you made that decision. I applaud you for that decision, and it is continuing to be the right direction for that. Again, I am sympathetic to the people who are being impacted, especially the seniors, which is a substantial population, as you know, in the North Auburn region that are serviced by this. I wish that there was some way that we could address those who are severely impacted financially, if we could somehow buffer them against this impact, but I don't know that there's a reasonable way to do that. But again, I would encourage you to move forward on this fee increase. Again, it was the right decision at the time that you made it, based on all of the evidence that I heard at that time. So thank you for your time.
Thanks, Wayne. Cecil Price.
Chairman Holmes, Supervisors, thank you for allowing me to speak. And if I can get my notepad in my back pocket, I'll be in better shape. The Supervisors are supposed to serve their constituent, their constituents' interest. That's a lot to achieve because our constituents vary so very much that you can't please them all all the time, can you? Roseville area citizens is fortunate to have Mr. Wiegand, and I salute you, sir, and I'm sincere. I really think that you do your job very well because you're representative, you're representing your people in your area the way that it should be done. People up here on the Hill maybe are not so fortunate because most of them don't feel that they have been represented the way that they would like to have been. They don't know all of the small or large decisions that you people have had to have made in the past. They don't know how much time, and they only know that, to them, there is an alternative. To them, they see an existing facility here that could be enlarged, improved, and would be able to handle their sewage problem here, and they really are not interested in the sewage problem down in Lincoln or a pipeline that they, or that they hear about that is going down the hill that's costing them more money that really doesn't serve them because if they have their own facility rebuilt, which will cost them less money than the money that it takes to go downhill, you can understand why all these people are so upset. That's really the bottom line. When they have available to them information that has been given to them by you people through your specialists, that indeed we can have an equal or better facility without spending as much money and costing them less money today and tomorrow and having to be able to control their own destiny, they will not have to wonder whether Lincoln is going to increase the fees substantially because it will be something that will be controlled here. That is one of the most important facts that I can tell you, is always make sure that you are in a position to make decisions for yourself and not let somebody else make decisions for your pocketbook in the future. I didn't have this little speech that I gave written in the same way that I wrote it here. I just kind of took it from my hip pocket and ran with it. But I know for sure that even though you folks have spent as much money, as much time as you have, and years, and by the way, I've been up there, not from, from a public level, but I have been up there many, many years in making large decisions about millions of dollars. And there is no way that I can understand why, Betty, and I should, Mr. Duran, I wasn't, I would have been here if I would have taken notice the way I should have and been here. But I didn't, so now I am here to try to play catch-up. And to try to play catch-up is for you folks to understand why that our area up here cannot, the people up here that is, they do not understand why that they should not be able to have their own facilities, and I repeat myself, for less money. And it is, and your facts have actually told these people that it costs us less money than to have that facility down. Now, you say, "Well, don't talk about it anymore, Mr. Price. Decision's made." Well, there has been times when things have been turned around, and so with that, I'm going to just say thank you for giving me the time. I appreciate your efforts, and I certainly would appreciate you giving some concern to the future, looking at it a little bit different to the people, to the people who actually live here. I'm not going to get into this small talk about it affects my pocketbook. You bet it does. I have commercial property, but let's not go there. I know where you've been. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Robin Caligo? And then Sam McLean? Sam still here? Don't see him.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. I want to say that I've been to the MAC meeting a month ago. I went to a neighborhood meeting last Thursday that Supervisor Holmes was attending. I was fortunate enough to be in a meeting with Jennifer yesterday, Supervisor Montgomery, and she explained clearly why she went to the regional system, and she got me to a point where I agree that that is the best solution. I didn't originally agree with that, but I do agree with it, and I realize that we move on from that point. The rate hike, I also appreciate you taking into consideration my idea of spreading out the fees, and I think, I don't remember this gentleman's name.
No.
Bill. Did say that it could be possible. The, previously, when that was done in 2001, the fee in the beginning was higher rather than lower, and if that could be a solution as well, maybe you can look into that. I would like you to also look into the additional funding. You said that could possibly keep our rates down. With all due respect, Supervisor Duran, I am astonished that you would think it would be okay to school somebody that was up here being passionate about the rate hike. And I apologize, I realize that you are passionate as well. I realize that you did take a lot of time making these decisions.
You should have been here earlier in the day, but I...
Okay. So clearly, really, all I want is for you to really think about that rate increase. The $73 million a month ago was now $76 million. The interest rate was 1.7, now it's 1.9. All of those things that are unknown is going to affect that rate hike. I heard yesterday in the meeting that it could go up yearly, and how much yearly? I realize you can't know that because you don't know the exact numbers, but I think most of us would like to get a little more solid information as far as that goes. You can't possibly expect that we can constantly afford this, you know, $165 some pennies a year, every year, because we can't. Because you, I believe Supervisor Holmes, you said the reason you got that low interest rate is because Auburn is considered a lower income.
Yeah, North Auburn.
North Auburn.
Yeah.
Because there are a lot of seniors that are on Social Security and a lot of retirees. So I think that's it. I'm nervous, and I hope you consider. Thank you.
Sam McLean, is Sam still here? Don't see him. Diana Burst?
Hello.
She's here again.
I have lived here for just one year. I moved from Cincinnati. In Cincinnati, I worked for two years with Planning Commission, so thank you for all your hard work. I do know what goes into making these decisions. I'm here in support of my mother, who has, over half of her property tax bill now goes to paying for sewer. With multiple low-income people who she has, again, not raised rents on, will have to increase rents on, which will move people out, which is another cost to her, and I understand we're talking about fees. I do believe that the Board can table today the decision to make a decision on whether or not there should be a fee increase. Is that correct?
Sure.
So I have one other question. 14 months ago, when you were giving information to the public, did you discuss the fee increases? Yes. And the letter that came out March 21st to today, do you feel that that is enough time for people to, I mean, do you feel you gave people enough time to really voice their opinions? I'm in agreement with that there wasn't enough time for people to really understand in North Auburn what was coming down the pipe. And I really do appreciate the job you do. I know, I, I work with the city manager, and I know the time and effort that you put into it. Are any of the 13 members that made up the initial commission going to benefit from this in any way? There were 13 members that initially came together...
I'm, I don't know what the...
On the recommendation committee? I have it on, I've got to have it on my Kindle, but I don't have the internet connection.
Was it technical advisory committee? Was that...
There were 13 members initially to make recommendations.
It could be in reference to the Plaister County Waste Water Authority, and I don't recall exactly how many members were on.
So there were engineers, architects, are any of those in a position to benefit from this? I'd like that to be under consideration.
Yeah, I can. I'll speak to that.
And I'm just unclear, I'm sorry, it doesn't address just specifically the fee increase issue, but will the plant be owned by Plaister County or the City of Lincoln?
Excuse me, the treatment plant is owned by the City of Lincoln, and it'll remain that way.
And a long-term consideration that I haven't heard brought up is, we all know a water shortage is coming. Who will have control over that water? Has anybody addressed that issue?
Are you referring to the reclaimed water that'll be produced at the...
In the next 10 years, water is going to be a global, could be potentially a global issue. There are already corporations buying up property on streams, sucking the water out of our lakes, and will we have the control? Will North Auburn and all of Plaister County have the control over the City of Lincoln if, for some reason, there's a water shortage? Have you given that consideration?
I, and I'll just...
Hi, Jack. I love what you do with kids.
Thank you. I'll just speak broadly. I know that the county has a tremendous amount of water rights, and we have a Middle Fork project, so we do have those water rights. Those water rights, you know, it's something we can talk to with PCWA, but they may be affected by what's going on with the Delta situation. We do have, and just so you know, on the reclaimed water, each party, both Lincoln and Plaister County, do retain ownership over their percentage of that Title 22 water. So where that goes and how that chews, we do have, we do have control over that.
And what is the percentage? Is there a percentage, or is there, how does that work?
Jim, you can speak.
It'll be directly proportionate to the flows that go into the treatment plant. So those flows, the, the...
Okay.
The influence that comes into the plant is metered. We all know what the contributions will be, and so the reclaimed water will be directly proportionate to that.
Thank you. You'll give me just one minute because I'm nervous, too. I just also wanted to make it clear that although there may be people from Lincoln here present, no one has chosen to speak for Lincoln, and that makes me a little interested why they're not interested.
They're here, they're in the back.
But they have not chosen to speak.
Well...
You, oh, oh, I'm sorry. You, I'm sorry. In the very beginning, you asked if there was anyone from Lincoln here to speak.
Yeah, they, they didn't come forward. I just wanted...
I apologize.
Yeah.
And if I did not cover this, I'll say it one more time. Over half of my 81-year-old mother's income, property tax, goes to the sewer system, and that's something you already know. So thank you for your time.
Les Potter, is Les still here? Mary Ann Frank, you're next. Didn't want you to fall asleep there.
Chairman, Board. Hi. Thanks for listening to everybody today. I'm against the fee, and I took it upon myself on Saturday to spend a couple hours in a local neighborhood. I knocked on 40 doors. I got 20 answers, 15 signatures. But of those 20 people I talked to, the one thing that was really impressed me or not impressed me really was there was a humongous lack of knowledge about the pipeline, local sewer, the fee. These people really had no knowledge of what was going on here or the meeting. So as was brought up earlier by the other Board members, I would encourage in future situations like this, we need to figure out a way to get more of that information out for the public because there's just not that much out there. I've lived in Auburn 30 years. I'm sorry I was not involved in this process earlier, but I don't take the Auburn Journal. I know I should have paid more attention, and I will in the future, I promise you that. In the past several, even up to 10 years, the Board has showed a lot of long-term cost investment and capital improvements that are going to benefit the people of the county. I am opposed to the fee, but if I have to pay the fee, I would like to see the money spent on a project here in the county, an asset that we will own after. To me, this is no different than the Justice Center, the new Tahoe Transit Center up in the Tahoe area. You guys just approved the, a new animal control facility. To me, this is an asset that belongs in the county, and if I have to pay extra $13.78, I would like to see it staying here. Two more quick questions, and then I will leave, and you can answer or not. What I'm hearing is the decision's made that... What I'm hearing is, is the decision's made that we're going to go with the pipeline. What I want to know is, can you not change that decision or will you not change that decision, number one? My guess is that if you guys choose, you can take it back out and I'm sorry again, I wasn't involved earlier and I know you guys have got thousands of hours involved in it, but it seems like if enough people stood up and said that they prefer a local system installed and the money kept in the county, that the board could pick it up and look at it again. There was a slide earlier that had the cost of where the SMD-1 fees are going. Can we get that back up? Yes, that one. So we're paying eighty-two now. The fee's going to go to ninety-five seventy-eight in part or in most, it sounds like, to pay for the interest for the seventy million dollar loan. In a couple of years, when that system's done, I can't see that need being there for that much money for the maintenance of the system. I'm not an engineer, but my guess is the system will be so well-built, it will need virtually minimal or no maintenance for the next thirty, forty years. So it seems like at that point, our fees would possibly go down once the system is in, if we had to pay for it. So if I could get that addressed and that's all I have for you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Mary Ann Frank and then Carl Franklin.
Are you going to answer my questions?
We don't have any idea what the fees will be in the future. Is that-
I'll be happy to walk through the table if-
I'm sorry, Les, he'll-
At the board's discretion, I'll be happy to walk through the table.
I'm sorry, Les, he'll, Mr. Durfee will.
If you, looking at the proposed M&amp;O fee, if you just walk down the column of numbers, the collection system operations is twenty-nine dollars and forty cents. That's the same as it is now. That's to operate the local connection system. So we're not suggesting that that change. That six dollars and sixty-five cents, again, the same as it is now. That's money that we put into reserves and spend on rehabilitation projects in our, within our local collection system. The regional project operations, twenty-five dollars and ninety-eight cents, that is to pay for essentially the treatment of the water down in Lincoln and to maintain the miles of pipeline and the lift station between SMD-1 and Lincoln. The four dollars and fifty cents is essentially a fund that we would be putting into reserves for future rehabilitation projects on the pipeline. And then that debt service payment of twenty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents, that's principal and interest both on the loan that would fund the construction. So that's how that, that's how those dollars break down. You can see that in terms of operations and treatment, that those are pretty similar numbers. There is that large capital component. If we were to rehabilitate or build a new treatment plant in North Auburn, there would be some large component of debt service that would go along with that cost as well. So I hope that answered the question.
So if the seventy-three point two million dollar firm price has exceeded because of cost overruns, would that rate go back up? Would that rate go up?
We would have to cover, if there's cost increases, we would have to cover the cost increases. That is correct. Right now, at this point in time, the discretionary dollars that are in the rate are the six sixty-five in rehab for local and the four fifty in rehab for, for the regional project. Those are numbers that could, for the time being, absorb costs. Ultimately, those would have to be replaced. It's prudent to be putting that money away for, for future rehabilitation. So there's, that is the way that works.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, I'm sorry, Ms. Frank, go ahead.
It's okay. Thank you very much for allowing me to come before you. I say good afternoon. We've had a long session. And I particularly want to thank Ms. Montgomery for spending the time with us yesterday afternoon and also Mr. Holmes, your input. I, if I'm understanding this correctly, we really, you as a board, really had no choice. You had been given an edict by the California Water Resources Commission. Is that correct? And they want everyone to go regional. Is that correct?
It's their stated goal.
So my only thought here is for your consideration in a possible way of implementing this increase and getting outside help as you, as we talked to you about yesterday, Ms. Montgomery. And also, what would we have to do to qualify, and I know this is going back a little ways too because the decision has already been made for the pipeline. But what would we have had to do to go back and have SMD-1 considered a regional sewer system? Because we have numerous entities that are coming into that system now. I, of course, I'm going to say, I'm against the increase. I've been here every year, every time it increases, I'm here. And I have a blessed neighbor and I know that you all will miss Dale Smith and he is not here today because he was told he better not because of health. Thank you all.
Thank you. Supervisor Hurl, I'm sorry, you had a-
Ma'am, just, you are right. Our board has to respond to both state and federal clean water standards that get handed down. Our board had three different options that were available to us to meet those, to meet that requirement. Two of them were considered quote-unquote "stay-at-home" options with a reconstruction, if you will, at SMD-1. And then the third option was the pipeline option. All three of those options would have met the standard. There's clearly a preference that was expressed to our board by the Chair of the-
Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board.
Thank you, that.
Water quality?
Yeah, yeah, Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board. She showed up at one of our meetings and clearly expressed the preference for this option, for the pipeline option. But all three options that the board was considering would have met the discharge standards as they exist today.
But the decision has already been made by you folks.
That decision was made as a result of a number of public hearings that we held over the course of about a year and a half, two years' worth of public hearings that we held and then we finally reached a decision fourteen months ago, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if I could, Mr. Chair, could I also, I just, thanks Kirk for the frame and I think that was really helpful. But, so the board had three different options. They all, I think, it's fair to say, had their strengths and weaknesses. All of them have risk, in my opinion. And I think what the board weighed was the long-term risk and benefits of all of those options, including the risk of future compliance, short-term costs, long-term costs to the ratepayers, everything imaginable about those three different options. And three of us decided that the pipeline was the best option under the circumstances. So the key to keep in mind is that the Regional Water Quality Control Board has the authority to tell us what the wastewater affluent looks like when it discharges into a stream. And that constantly changes over the years and it constantly becomes more rigorous. And based on all of that input, three of us decided that the pipeline was the best alternative under the circumstances.
Thank you.
And I can tell you, Mary Ann, and thank you for taking the time to meet with me yesterday. I really did appreciate that opportunity. As recently as ten days ago, as Supervisor Duran referenced earlier, we did go back and meet once again with the State Water Board to say, you know, hasn't anything really changed from your perspective? And the answer was very clearly no. That what they were still looking for was what they're calling a regional solution, which is the pipeline to Lincoln, and that the other options were really not acceptable to them. And so the message we got from them was still very clear that this was the direction that we needed to go. Thank you.
Carl Franklin, is Carl Franklin in the audience? Lowell Cook?
Who's the next one after that, Jim?
Bonnie Day. Bonnie Day here? Emma Luhann, is Emma here? Oh, hi, Emma.
My name is Lowell Cook and I live in North Auburn. And pretty much everything that I had in mind has been said, but I, it's funny that the City of Lincoln has this brand-new, perfect plant and it only costs them thirty-two dollars a month. Who's running their show? Who makes their decisions? And I can't understand how they can build a plant like that and we can't. And anyway, the thing says to protest and that's why we're here. We, the problem is, I think, we was already paying too much. And if it wasn't for that, we wouldn't be protesting the increase. And anyway, that's about, you're hearing our protest. And I want to know who's my District One, are you my-
No. It's either I or Supervisor Montgomery. Depends on where you live.
I want to thank you, Jim.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Bonnie Day? Emma?
Oh, yeah.
What? Oh, yeah.
We've been sinning up Turd Creek without a paddle.
Emma, Emma Luhann. And then Ed Elgren, is Ed still here? Ed Elgren? No. Hi, Emma.
Hi, how you doing? I too have, you know, had a big things planned to say, but of course, everybody else has said it. But being a small business owner like so many people that were burnt out August thirtieth of two thousand nine, having to pay fees to come onboard in a new building that we had, that we relocated for, I, in a whole, I'm just sick and tired of paying more and more fees. Fire fees, you know, sewer fees, just, we're feed to death. And I realize that each and every one of you have a job that you're doing also, but being a small business owner is getting more and more difficult to manage. When I, as a CEO of my corporation, we're very small, I don't get a paycheck. And it's getting more and more difficult to pay my employees because there's ten dollars here, there's a hundred and twenty for properties, there's two hundred and sixty that come aboard. And by the end of the year, we're about thirty-five thousand dollars more in fees than we were three years ago, if you can, you know, collectively put everything together. So I think on my behalf and for a lot of people in my position, not just small businesses, but also people that are business owners as well as property owners, because I've been more fortunate than others, we have several pieces of property in Plaister County. And I'm just getting sick of paying more and more fees for every little thing. And I realize that this is about the sewer fees. But each and every time a fee is raised, we then have to find a way to pay for these fees. So, and I know Supervisor Holmes, you do a wonderful job for us. Very grateful to have you onboard with us. I mean, I, you do, you're just one of the greatest people that I've ever come in contact with as far as, you know, political, politically motivated. But just keep in mind, you know, it's not just me that is upset about it. And I think this is probably a culmination of people just saying, I'm sick and tired of paying more and more fees. It's one here, two there, seven here. So just take into consideration all of the fees that you guys vote in on a daily basis, you know, and there's always people like executives and different places of the county that get paid huge fees, get paid huge salaries, that we as business owners do not get the luxury of enjoying that type of thing. Because I'm sure that the salaries that are being paid just right here could probably pay for our entire dealership, you know, on an annual basis. So just take that into consideration and keep that in mind. Thank you so very much.
Thanks, Emma.
Your welcome.
Dan Gro, Dan Gro. And then Patrick Kastner, Patrick Kastner here. She went in show.
Hi, I'm Dan Gro. I'm also a North Auburn resident. I've got a pea brain. But what I don't understand is, if Lincoln can process and take care of collection system operations and collection system repair and rehab for thirty dollars or a little over, why does it cost us thirty-five? If I'm in, if I'm in Lincoln and I have a residence there, I have a sewer line and I pump my sewage into the Lincoln Treatment Plant. If I'm Dan Gro and I'm in Auburn and I'm going to put a pipeline now for my house, basically to that same plant, why is my fees any more than what Lincoln pays? Only difference I can see is the cost of the pipe of fourteen dollars or, excuse me, whatever it is, thirteen dollars, and the cost of pumping it to get it there. Everything else is equal. Their cost of operations in Lincoln for the repair and system operations shouldn't be any different than, than mine here at the Jogger Road Plant. So why, why is processing in Jogger more expensive than Lincoln? And if that, if that plant goes away, then I should be charged the same thing that Lincoln is charged. We might have a few more pipes here and there, but when we collect a hundred, hundred people coming into the line at ten thousand dollars a pop, that's, whatever that's, you know, that's a million dollars a year just on people connecting to the system. And to me, that is where the repair, the system and the project repair and operation should come from. When a developer puts a subdivision in, they put the pipes in, they put the connections of the houses, they put everything in. There's no cost to the county at all. And so when a person builds a house, there is no cost to the county. They're paying it ten thousand dollars. There's no extra cost for the county at all. And so back down to basics, why are we paying any more than Lincoln pays for the process of our sewage? It shouldn't cost anything more than their prices. And so our price should be thirty-two dollars plus thirteen dollars to get it there. And maybe some pumping charges to pump it over hills and dales and what have you. So our, our fees should be, in my mind, forty-five, fifty dollars, not ninety-five because all the cost for Auburn is going to go away.
Mr. Durfee will address it.
I'll be happy to take some of that on and I'm going to ask Dave and Bill to help me out here. But the, if you look at the, at the breakdown of those costs, the twenty-five dollars and ninety-eight cents that says regional project operations, that includes a component for treating the water at Lincoln's Treatment Plant. That component on a unit basis is exactly the same that Lincoln's residents will pay. So we are, we will be paying exactly the same price to treat the water that Lincoln's residents pay. The, there is a component in that twenty-five dollars that's also to run our pump station and the pipeline as well. That's a cost that's different from Lincoln because they don't use that pump station and pipeline. The other components above that are local. We have to maintain the local piping and connection, pardon me, and connections and so forth. So all of the local piping that collects this wastewater and brings it to the pump station, that's what that twenty-nine dollars and forty cents is for. And then the twenty-nine, twenty-five at the very bottom is the capital that will construct the pipeline and the, and the lift station and purchase the treatment capacity, actually expand Lincoln's Treatment Plant so that they can accommodate our water. That in essence is our connection fee, which is like what a developer would pay to buy into the system. So long, perhaps complex answer to your question, but the straightforward answer is that the actual treatment cost at Lincoln is exactly the same as Lincoln residents will pay.
So do we have a breakdown of the existing fees for collection system operations for Lincoln, the collection system repair and rehab and the treatment plant operations and what have you that comprise Lincoln's rates?
I don't know, I don't know if we have a table of that. It's certainly information that can be provided.
Something to keep in mind is that we are up in the foothills and whereas Lincoln is at the valley floor and flat, their sewage, when you put the pipe in the ground and slope, it runs from here to there. In the foothills, we have to pump it up and over hills. Sometimes we're pumping this water two or three times.
Well, I understand that. That makes sense.
There's also, there's also, there's also a large difference in the relative age of the systems. Lincoln has experienced- Lincoln has experienced a lot of development. A great proportion of their system is new piping. SMD-1 as a, as a comparison has not had that same ratio of recent new development. So our, the majority of our piping is much older and requires a significantly higher level of maintenance than does newer piping.
But the $6.65 captures that extra cost, right?
That's essentially rehab money. That's for when we're actually replacing.
Well, you say repair and rehab.
Correct.
And so, and so if I was to break down and look at Lincoln's, okay, Lincoln would have collection systems and operations similar to us. It doesn't cost them anymore to, or us anymore to, to open up a drain or what have you than Lincoln does. So Lincoln's price now should be exactly like ours on collection systems and operations. And we throw in a few extra bucks because ours is older. I, I made a few phone calls.
Sir, we have to move, we have to try to get other people on the screen.
Okay, I made a couple of.
Supervisor Ullrich has a question.
Just, just briefly, if I may.
Just a real quick.
No, excuse me, Supervisor Ullrich wants to.
Just briefly. Mr. Durfee outlined not only what's, what's behind those costs and what we have to face in SMD-1 and ongoing maintenance. The other critical thing to bear in mind is the number of EDUs per linear foot of run, right? Up in the foothill, up in Auburn area.
Sure.
Far less density, far greater run, maintaining more system for far, far, far fewer EDUs. So your, your, your normal ongoing O&M is spread across much more units in Lincoln with fewer linear feet of run to have to pay for. A significant cost driver down. Now, I didn't agree with this option, but trust me, sir, very few people get into these numbers deeper than I do. I didn't agree with these, this option, but I agree with staff's numbers as to why they're sitting here. If I had any question as to whether or not staff was asking the rate payers to absorb a cost that was not justifiable associated with the decision that was made, I'd be all over it. So I, you know, take that for what it's worth, but I believe staff's numbers are correct and I'm not a fan necessarily of this option.
I just, I made a phone call in Grass Valley. Their rates are $55, Jackson, under 30, amongst other valley places that are lower. But still, they're, they're hill country. They have the same issues that we do. And so why their rates are substantially lower is beyond me. And so I, you know, I could understand a, a extra cost because of the amount of feet per resident is more in a rural area, that's understandable. But not three times as much as somebody else.
Thank you, Mr.
That is beyond my ability to comprehend.
Thank you. Mr. Kastner? Is that your?
Thank you for listening to me. I appreciate your time. And what's, what's really disturbing is, is that, you know, you, you get a glass of water out of the sink and you drink it, and it costs you a dollar to say. And now, when we take that same water and we put it down the toilet, it costs us $3. There's something wrong with that picture. And it's, it's really hard to fathom that. I, I understand you, you folks make difficult decisions. But I also understand that this is a life, lifelong effect and it doesn't seem to change. It's affecting me, it's affecting my family and my ability to live in Placer County. And I oppose this rate increase and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir. James Neff and then Stan Nader.
Thank you. Just like to reiterate what everybody else had to say they were upset. I'm upset, 21%, then now a 17% increase, I don't like it. I'm going to get more involved, I can tell you that. Because it kind of surprised me when I got this letter and I didn't realize that the only type of protest you had was a written protest. I could have got everyone on my block to sign that. But that is me. I have a, the question I have to ask you people, since you sit on these boards, since the state and federal government put this on us, how do we force it back to them and give us the money to support this? I mean, you think it's a joke, but I tell you, I have an interest in 66 and these goddamn regulations for smog. We still have six, seven of the 10 smoggiest cities in the United States. And we've been paying into it since 1966. There's a serious problem with it. They keep increasing the risk, they keep increasing the, what needs to be done. And this is not going to go away. This water, I guarantee, is going to get worse and worse and worse. And we're going to have to have more and more ways to refine this water. I guess I get upset the state and the federal government because they make the mandates on us. And I guess the only way we have to do is we've got to get them out of there. We've got too many PhDs running these things and people that don't know the nuts and the bolts of things. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you, sir. Stan Nader and then Gordon Ainsley.
Mr. Chairman, board members. My name is Stan Nader. I'm the mayor of Lincoln. I'd like to acknowledge that two of my fellow council members are here. One of them had to leave. He had a meeting to go to, Councilman Joyner and Councilman Short are here today. Our Public Services Director, Mark Miller, is here. And the President and CEO of Stand Tech, who operates our treatment facility and is the designer for the pipeline, is also in the audience. I want to commend the board for its commitment and its courage to maintain what has been a longstanding decision by this body to go regional. The city of Lincoln has responded to that commitment by providing a facility that can accommodate wastewater from other communities. We can double the capacity of our plant by just adding three employees. This speaks to the advantage of being in a regional facility because of the economies of scale. One of the other major concerns is, has been spoken to today, is the requirement by the State Water Quality Control Board and the continuing regulation that will be coming down, particularly as it relates to pharmaceuticals and endrins and heavy metals. The only way that you can deal with those in a least-cost environment is at a large facility such as the one is at Lincoln, where you let Mother Nature and sunlight degrade those components before they re-enter the stream. As Supervisor Wigan has just shared, the stream from Auburn to Lincoln is the most sensitive spawning area. And being able to remove those materials and re-break them down in a, in a, in a large pond is very critical so that we can have a stable, healthy fishery. So I applaud you for staying the course and will applaud you for taking an affirmative action today to make sure that the regional project moves forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nader. Gordon Ainsley. And then David Heron, is David Heron here?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, fellow supervisors. I'm here to urge you to vote down this fee raise. And I want you to know I'm on a septic system. The reason I'm here is because a friend of mine said, "Gordon, you need to take a look at this." So I did. I spent a lot of time with what you used to make your decision last year. And I think you need to emulate my old friend Zane Keim, smartest doctor I ever knew. I knew him to be one, wrong once. We used to rock climb together, go up to the mountains, hour each way, a lot of time to talk. We talked shop. And the one time I found him to be wrong was the amount of zinc in his vitamin mineral formula. I said, "Zane, that ain't going to work." You know, you've got two milligram, excuse me, four milligrams of copper and 10 of zinc. You need like, you know, if you're going to stay with the FDA's ratio, which is reasonable, you need like 30 milligrams of zinc. And so about a month later, he said, "Gordon, I thought you'd like to know I changed my formula." Okay? You folks need to change your formula. You need to go back. You simply made a mistake. And the only way you can be right is to change that. I'll tell you why I say that. Now, these people don't know that you had a choice. You could either, you were told that if you went with the pipeline, sewer prices wouldn't change. It was going to be about the same. Well, that didn't happen, did it? The reason is because you were expecting Auburn to go in, which wouldn't have mattered if you went with a local system. That would have taken the risk out of it. And the one thing you weren't told was that operation and maintenance hadn't been figured into the price of the pipeline. I just found that out last Thursday. That's a pretty big omission, don't you think? That might be a reason to go back and look at it. Now, I don't agree with the way the statistics were made. Now, you were told last year that you could give these people sewer, sewer service for nine or $10 cheaper than they're presently getting. Their bill could go down nine or $10. Actually, that was inaccurate, in my opinion, and I'm going to disagree with, the way staff made their decision. There, it's right here on the next to last page. I'm going to read this. I find this kind of alarming. It says, "For the SOMAS and PERC," those are the local options, "estimated MNO fee," and I checked and that's the entire thing, according to up here. "MNO fee is based on a planned 20-year repayment of a 30-year financing." Now, all of these systems, all of these systems qualified for 30-year financing. But the staff chose, and you know, you could say, "Okay, this, this makes sense. Let's pay it off early." It's all a better thing. Well, but if you're going out and buying a car and you're interested in your monthly payment, you want to get the best value, you don't compare three-year financing to five-year financing and, and then figure that the best value is your lowest, your lowest rate by month. So the only way you can do this is apples to apples, okay? And if, if paying off the thing early is good, okay, well, let's, let's just calculate paying off the, the pipeline early. Let's just go for $111 a month. Then you can compare equally, okay? But anyway, back then, it was supposed to be 74, 73, something like that? For the, for the close, the local systems? Well, I called up a bank and I said, "Would you please do these amortizations for me?" And so they did the amortizations for me. And what it, you know, I got the, I got the difference between the 30-year and the 20-year. And then I divided by 7,800, which is the number of EDUs. And then I divided that by, that got the yearly price. And then I, then I, I divided that by 12. And what I got is that your people, if you'd had, if you'd had the numbers correctly, apples with apples, not apples with crab apples. If you'd had the numbers presented to you accurately, the choice would have been $97, is it? 96, what is it? Something like that. Okay, 95, 78. It would have been 95, 78 versus 63 or 64 if you'd had the numbers presented to you, apples to apples instead of apples to crab apples. Okay? That's a huge difference. These people don't know about that. They were never told that. So I'm telling them. You need to go back. The only way you'll, the, the best way to avoid being wrong is as soon as you're wrong, go back and correct it. You need to vote no on this.
Thank you, Gordon. Bob Snyder.
I'm sorry, before we move on, can, can we address Mr. Ainsley's assertion that O&M costs were not included?
O&M costs are included in the model in all options. And, and the assumptions that were, that were pointed out in the staff report were discussed at great length and public.
And as I recall with vivid clarity, we did discuss the fact that there would have to be rate increases with this. So in, in the interest of identifying when you're wrong quickly, you're wrong that we weren't told that there would be rate increases and that was very public. It was a very public part of our discussion. And you're wrong that O&M costs were not included in it. I, I appreciate your passion, but I want to make.
I'd like to ask Mr. Atkinson from our conversation last night, did you not tell me that O-N? I asked him, "Okay, so since Auburn didn't come in, how come we aren't looking at 90 bucks?" Because that's what it said, that's what it says here. And he said, "Well, that's because operation and maintenance wasn't included." Would you care to answer that?
Supervisor Ullrich, did you have a comment?
I, I just, I, I agree with your conclusion that the board might have made the wrong decision. I say that biasly because I didn't cast the vote the way they did. But I disagree with your assertion of how we got here. I very clearly made a very public issue of the rate disparities that we were looking at as part of my arguments against going this direction. This board did make an informed decision. And, and so, and, and we had extensive conversation at the hearing about the ongoing O&M, about debt service retirement, about all of these issues.
You don't have a problem with 20-year versus 30-year amortization being included?
And we, actually, we had that conversation as well. We absolutely did have that conversation as well. So I, I am satisfied that there was a thorough vetting of the cost implications of all of the options that got us here to this point. Again, I lost on the vote, but I am very satisfied, Gordon, that we had a very thorough vetting of all of the cost implications and, and our board had a good, healthy discussion about all of that.
All right. So you're okay with 20-year financing being calculated for the fee?
No, what I'm, what I'm saying is that during the hearing, we actually had that conversation and adjusted the cost estimates so that it was not an apples to crab apples. We did actually get fairly deeply into the numbers amortized, both on the 20-year schedule and on a 30-year schedule, because I made staff do it.
Okay, so did you come up with the same figures I did?
We came, what we came up with was a disparity along the lines of what we are talking about here today. The numbers we're seeing here today are very consistent in terms of percentage increase over the SOMAS option of a stay-at-home, which was going to be roughly a static rate versus the PERC option where PERC was, was saying they could provide a lower rate. So yeah, we did see a, a very similar deviance in numbers, yes.
And if I could, since we're revisiting such a level of detail, but I think it's important for the community to understand the critical components related to my vote, which was different than Kirk's, obviously, was that a pipeline system is considered to be a 7-year asset, 70, 7-0. A plant is subject to complete new regulation exposure every five years, which is why we would have had to rebuild SMD-1. It was a very old plant, but it wasn't even worth trying to fix. It had to be completely rebuilt. So all of those, the financing, the term, all of it has an impact on the rates. You know, we could have attempted to finance, probably could have financed the thing out of our general fund for 100 years to keep it cheap. But it would have been a bad decision. It would have been an irresponsible decision. So we'd not only dealt with that level of detail, but a lot more. And, and we made a decision.
Mr. Atkinson, did you have a?
Yes, sir, just wanted to provide some clarity on the, the missing component of the rates. So one of the things that, that Mr. Ainsley and I talked about last Thursday, and I'll just clarify this, was the difference between the rates that presented in March and then were presented to your board back in August. One of the things we pointed out was that we did add, in addition to the maintenance and operations, which was included in March, we also then added the $4.50 a month component for rehab and rehabilitation, which was not considered in the numbers that were presented in March. So I just wanted to clarify.
That's rehab and rehabilitation of the regional pipeline?
That's correct.
And, yeah, and I guess one of the things I would say is the supervisors didn't have that information when they made the decision because it's not in here. And what I see here is, this is what you were given to make your decision. And based on the amortization that was done, what you have here, that you made your decision on, is apples versus crab apples. And I think you need to go back.
Thanks, Gordon. Bob Snyder. And then Richard Sandborn. And then Richard Sandborn. And that's it.
Pressure's on. I'm Robert Snyder. Live in Auburn. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you about this. I'm probably one of the few individuals in the room that has sat through the 12-year process. And I'm also a civil engineer, landowner, and paid close attention to the pluses and minuses. To answer the question, mostly for the audience, of why we're here, it's the Clean Water Act. We elected representatives at the state and federal level who passed a law that said, over time, we will clean up our water sources. And that's what we've been doing forever. And we will continue to do unless you change those elected officials, and I don't support that. I think the Clean Water Act has been beneficial to the United States. This is just one of the things we have to live with. I'm going to give you an example of another way to think about this because this is -- it needs to be simplified in some way to understand it because it is very complicated. And it would take a day for you to really understand all the pluses and minuses of all of the various alternatives. But let's say you need a pump to operate and exist. You must operate that pump. You must maintain it. And there's a cost to operate and maintain it. Over time, you learn that the pump must be replaced every five years. Plus, there's additional water that has to be pumped. So, it's not only the same water. You have to -- it's increased every five years. You want to find a choice that's going to provide you the lowest cost over time to operate that pump. And that's what the board has done. If you look at the chart up here, you'll see a couple of interesting discrepancies. One of them is the treatment plant operations. There's a four-plus-dollar difference between what Lincoln pays and what we pay. That's because they have a larger rate base. They have a modern plant, and it's expandable. It's easy to accommodate any changes. One thing you haven't heard today is that the plant that we have here that you want to hang on to and maintain has the capacity for a one-half-a-day storage in case something goes wrong, if something breaks. They have one-half-a-day to fix it. Otherwise, they're paying fines. In Lincoln, they have the capacity for 60 days. That's a huge difference. If something goes wrong in Lincoln, they can shut the plant down and take 60 days to fix it. You don't have the room or the capacity to ever do anything like that here. So, you find a pump that will last a long time. This pipeline will last 70 years. Another component of this chart is the regional project debt service payment. It's financed over 30 years. That component goes away in 30 years. It will be paid for, yet you'll be able to continue to use it. My last comment is for the low-income people in here. If you are actually considering putting some money into this project, you need to direct it, not to every rate payer because most of them can afford this increase, but some can't. You need to find a system where you have a qualification, single person in a household or two people in a household. Instead of paying for a whole family, they should be paying for what they actually use. So, I would suggest that you find a way to have a system where those people can qualify and have a lower rate. And it would be paid by the general fund and not by the rate payer's fund. Thank you for the time. And I know it's been arduous, and I appreciate your effort. Thank you.
Mr. Sandborn.
Thank you for allowing me to speak to you this morning. For the supervisors, I'll give my conclusions first because I've got a lot of material and I think I'll run out of time. The economy of scale should be looked at against the cost of a pipeline. Pipeline is very expensive. It's a pressurized pipeline. That means there's pumps. The pumps have to operate continuously or the sewage backs up someplace in the pipeline. The pumps are a cost. Electricity is continually used to operate the pumps. They have to be backed up with diesel pumps. Okay. Pressurized, you know, pumping sewage should be avoided whenever possible. Gravity works for free. It's very efficient if you get a good line on your pipe. If you can, you know. So, that's going to be a cost. Also, the cost of replacing water in the creeks and streams. As, you know, in a dry summer, the water may not even be available. It may be expensive. Those costs, the cost of operating the pipeline and the cost of replacing the water are going to be passed up the hill to the people in SMD-1. Lincoln's not going to share in that. As the -- you haven't even thought about this. As the regulations on the quality of water, of treated sewage become more stringent, that water becomes valuable because it's clean enough to drink just about. All that is going down the hill. The water, which will become more valuable, goes down the hill. The cost of shipping it down there comes up to SMD-1. So, money, the tax money, which could be spent in SMD-1, goes down the hill. Anyhow, another thing is this is a bad time, a bad time to give even a small increase. We're just coming out of the worst recession since the Depression, and we're increasing the fees on these people. I regard, the way I regard this issue is you voted, what, 14 months ago, a little over a year ago? And I was at those hearings. You voted on what you wanted. This is what we want. This is what will make the state happy. Now, you're voting on can we pay for it? My suggestion is vote no. We can't pay for it and let this thing die. I could go over the way I've come to these. You know, there's this conclusion. The fees, the jobs, that's it. That's okay. Thank you.
Thanks. David, are you David Herron?
No, I'm not.
Did you sign up to speak?
No, I didn't.
Okay. That's it, then.
My name's Chuck Giel.
Oh, wait.
Riverwood Drive. I've got just a couple of questions on the nuts and bolts. The way I figure this thing, doing the math, it's $10,000 a EDU. You've got 7,000 plus, and it's 76 million. Is my math right? $10,000 a household? Okay. And I just heard, and it's going to cost, what, approximately $1,000 a foot to run this pipeline? Is my math correct there? 12 miles, 13 miles, 68,000 feet?
I'm not sure how much.
76 million dollars? $1,000 a foot? Huh?
No, that construction cost is for the construction of a large pump station, decommissioning of the existing treatment plant, construction of the miles of pipeline, and the construction and purchase of treatment capacity at the treatment plant. So, it's more than just the pipeline.
What size pipe is this?
It varies depending on where it is. It's...
Depending on where we're talking about, it's in the range between 20-inch and 30-inch.
20 to 30-inch, okay. And I just heard something about the Lincoln plant has the capacity to store 60 days' worth of sewage. That's 90 million gallons? And that's just ours? Where do they store 90 million gallons?
The Lincoln facility actually has several storage ponds. One of them is an emergency storage pond where they can actually store raw wastewater. And also, partway through their process, they have what's called a maturation pond, and that can actually store 60 days' worth of wastewater where it actually sits and continues to provide some treatment before it actually discharges.
You say 60 days? How many gallons is that? No, how many gallons a day?
Bob?
The exact volume numbers you see here, the maturation pond is designed for 30 times for 36, 120 million gallons basically. The emergency storage bases, I just don't remember the volumes.
City of Lincoln has a lot of land.
120 million gallons.
And they have a lot of ponds.
That's like 120 water towers, million-gallon water towers. A lot of land. Okay, thanks very much.
Okay. Councilman Short, if you want to come forward. And then that's it.
I was going to say, good morning, but I think that's not willfully out of date. Ladies and gentlemen, I just want to thank you for taking the time to consider this item today. Chairman, when you called earlier for Lincoln to address this, we didn't actually feel it was appropriate to address it because, quite frankly, this is an issue for the county to determine for its residents, as indicated by your staff. And so, you know, we understand that and we, you know, stand aside to help you technically. But also, we realize that this is a county decision.
I wanted to extend the courtesy, just in case.
Thank you. But it is interesting, one of the things that came up in your discussion about the Applegate plant, you're funding that with $100,000 a year of general fund revenue. For the number of EDUs, that is, 38, which I believe was the number, that's about $219.30 per month. That's a big chunk. What we're trying to do is find a way to help keep rates down because I think that was the ultimate goal of this project. There were a couple of questions that were asked. I just want to clarify that this project encourages development. It does not encourage development beyond general plans that are already in place for the county and for Lincoln because that segment in between would be a forest main, which, if you tried to connect to a forest main, very bad things would happen to your house. You basically have blowback. And that's one of the things about this project. It's not simply a gravity project. It was designed to get sewage there quickly and efficiently. And so, I think from that perspective, it's a good thing. As far as the increasing costs, the unfortunate thing is that we're all subject to the increasing costs. No matter if you're in Lincoln, in Placer County, in Auburn, wherever you are through the North State, our water quality regulations are enormous. But if we all band together, if we work together to overcome those impediments, to implement the types of treatment that our mayor talked about a few minutes ago for pharmaceuticals, for heavy metals, we can do that more effectively together. Because what you're saying is if you have more folks working together, you have an economy of scale. And I'll just leave you with a couple of thoughts. Governance is an issue, Supervisor Duran. You mentioned that earlier. And, you know, again, we're still working through the governance system. But as we've stated before, the governance system will include Placer County. And I would submit to you the MRF has been a great example of a way that regional government can work because I believe for the last 10 years, we kept the rates fixed. We kept the rates fixed. We paid off the bonds, and we're financially solvent. So, that's a great thing. And lastly, there was discussion about PNWA and ownership of the plant. PNWA is the Placer Nevada Water Wastewater Authority, which I'm not sure if that exists. That may be something to continue or to take up with the board at some point in the future. But that board was made up of elected and appointed officials from each of the cities, counties, and affected entities. If I could have two moments, please?
Two moments?
Yes.
That's it.
But there was no public benefit accruing to any one of those individuals. They were all folks serving in a capacity like yours. And finally, ownership of the plant. As we've had the discussion on the Regional Water Quality Control Board, yes, ownership of the plant does vest in Lincoln. But as we've stated before, our goal is for all of our partners in this plant to have a fair and equal say in how we do things, not holding each other back as far as capacity improvements that are needed for individual agencies, and also making sure that we're all paying the same rate. Because, again, our rates are fairly substantially low, and we intend to try to keep the rates throughout the region that way, as best we can. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we're going to take a brief recess while the protest votes. If there's any protest votes that need to come in that haven't been brought forward, now is the time to do it. And we'll take a brief, what do you think, five minutes? 10 minutes? 10 minutes. Okay. So before I close, public hearing. Okay, public hearing's closed. I'll bring it back to discussion. And, oh, we need to know how much the protest votes are.
SMD-1, a total of 530.15 SMD-1 EDU protests were received, and of these, 148 EDUs appeared to be from tenants and mobile home residents. We have counted the tenant and mobile home protests for the purposes of determining whether potential majority protest exists, though have not independently verified whether the tenants and mobile home residents were authorized by the property owner to submit a protest. In either case, the submitted protests constitute less than 3,930 threshold for a majority protest. The clerk of the board therefore determines that a majority protest does not exist as to the SMD maintenance and opposition fee.
Thank you.
And for CSA 28, Zone 24, Applegate, 7.36 EDUs of protests were received from customers of Applegate.
And the threshold was on that?
Threshold was 20 EDUs required.
Okay, thank you. So the protest vote has failed. Okay, now I bring it back to the board to see what they want to do. Supervisor Duran.
I'm going to go ahead and start by saying that I do appreciate very much hearing your concerns about a rate increase. It's not something that I am fond of doing, it's not something that I want to do, but it's something that comes with the territory of increased requirements from a state agency that sees fit to want to continue to require more and more be returned and taken out of the water. I do appreciate each and every one of you coming up here and standing at the podium and telling us how you feel. It's your right as a citizen, we need to hear it. What I am disappointed of, and this has nothing to do with you folks here, but the misinformation that you've been told, it sounds like there's quite a bit of misinformation and confusion still. And I'm not sure how we resolve that in the future, but I'm really disappointed about The rate increase is not, again, is not something that's easy to do. But I can assure you that moving forward in the future, I'll take into consideration any opportunity to assist with the rates, whether it be from an outside source or, you know, if there are other decisions that need to be made with regards to the rates moving forward. That's our job, that's my job, and I don't take that job lightly. And there was another question that someone asked with regards to the decision being cast in stone. Many of you probably don't know that in addition to being a county supervisor, I own my own law office and I also own a manufacturing business. I don't make decisions in a vacuum, all right? When conditions change and I have to rethink a direction, I consider that direction. Based on the information that I have thus far, after meeting with State Division of Water Resources, there have been no substantive changes to their requirements for requiring us or encouraging us to go regional. To the best of my knowledge, there isn't anything currently affecting the rate or the loan. And therefore, you know, with all due respect to the people that this rate increase is going to affect, I'm going to have to motion that we move forward with that rate increase.
Supervisor Montgomery.
I just wanted to make a few comments before we move forward. I also want to thank everyone for coming out today. I know it's a scary thing to stand up at that podium and make a statement that you're very passionate about. And I know that because just over a year ago, I had to vote for a rate increase on myself. I was in this same situation that you faced today. And part of what got me to the decision that I'm going to make today, which is going to be in support of the rate increase, is seeing the rates that we have to pay in a very small non-regionalized sewer district wastewater treatment area. My rates were, in 1991, they were $90 a month, they're now almost $170 for sewer. What I don't want to see in the future is people in SMD-1 having to see those kind of rate increases. And I truly believe in my heart of hearts that by going and embracing the regional solution, that we will avert that as much as possible, understanding that all these rates are going to increase over time as additional responsibilities are put on all the existing wastewater treatment plants to meet new requirements and new guidelines from the state and feds. Coincidentally, last week, I took my ethics training, we have to take state mandated ethics training, which is maybe a contradiction in terms, but took that last week. And they have a number of examples of difficult ethical situations in which you as an elected, me as an elected, can find ourselves. And one is the situation where you have friends and supporters who hold a diametrically opposed position to you, and you are going to have to disappoint them and let them down and know that you may lose their friendship, you may lose their vote, but that you have to make a decision based on all the information you have and an internal compass which determines your ethics in the decision-making process. And that's not an easy thing to do. It's not easy to sit up here and know that you're disappointing people very personally. But again, as Supervisor Duran said, 10 days ago, we had a conversation with the State Water Board, and from their perspective, nothing has changed that would change my intention to move forward with the project that we adopted 14 months ago. And unfortunately, in support of that project, this rate increase. What I am going to ask staff to do, because Mr. Knaff, I think it was, raised the question, how do we get the states and the fed to pay up, the state and the feds to pay up on this? I'm going to ask that staff and we as electeds continue to badger our state and federal electeds and representatives to really come in and help us with this project, identify some federal dollars to help it that we can then use to offset these costs and in the future, lower rates. Same with the state. We owe it to you and we owe it to ourselves to try to continue to identify those dollars and bring them back to the project in the hopes that we can lower rates in the future. So that's really all I have to say, but I would second Supervisor Duran's motion.
And just to clarify, the motion includes adopting an ordinance adjusting the fees that's set out on page 151, finding that the fee imposition is exempt from environmental review under CCOR and directing staff to assess the monthly MNO fees for SMD-1 Applegate CSA.
That is correct, Counselor.
Supervisor Wiggant, you had your line on?
Just, yeah, make some comments to, I know, again, a long exhaustive hearing, and I just want to take a brief couple of moments to articulate that for me personally, and I think you've heard from two others, that very detailed issue with a huge amount of analysis that went into it, for me, actually, it was an easy decision. The regional decision was not in any way something that I wavered from, from the consideration of the other two alternatives. Really boils down to, there's no question that we had alternatives that would have resulted in cheaper rates today, but I'm convinced much more expensive rates in the future because that's exactly what history has shown us, and there's no reason to think that that history is going to change. And I would only pass on, in addition to the comments that you just heard from my two colleagues, that one comment that was an eye-opener for me with the Regional Water Quality Control Executive Director was that as she looked throughout the state and even in the nation, she was astounded that we weren't intensely gravitating towards our regional opportunity because she knew of many places throughout the state where they would die for having that opportunity. And the question is, could we make the numbers be close enough to get over the hump today so that we'd have something that would continue to benefit us and the people in the future for a long time to come? And I'm very comfortable that this is the best decision in that regard.
Any other comments? Okay, there's motion second to approve item 3B. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Supervisor Ullrich and Supervisor Holmes voted no. Okay. Thank you, everyone, for showing up. Thank you, staff, for your diligence. Thank you, Kathy, for being here. And now, and now, we'll take up our 11:30 timed item, Community Development Resource Mr. Haas, please. Sir, if you please take your conversation outside, we have another item that we need to hear. Thank you for your patience, everybody.
Okay.
Chair, Honorable Board. I'm here to present staff response to a third-party appeal of the Planning Commission's approval of a conditional use permit and certification of the project EIR for the Cabin Creek biomass facility. While I was hoping for the opportunity to showcase my expansive knowledge of all things biomass, in the interest of time, I'm just going to kind of walk through, we're just going to skip over the whole presentation here and get to the, get to the recommendation, which is really the heart of the matter. I hope you've had a chance to read the staff report, certainly here to answer any questions you have about the issues raised in the staff report as well. Through the appeal process, staff worked collaboratively with the appellant to create seven new conditions of approval, which are shown up in the attached recommended conditions of approval and discussed in the staff report. The new conditions significantly strengthen the project and support the EIR analysis. Thanks should go to Kevin Bundy with the Center for Biological Diversity for his spirit of cooperation and assistance in making of cooperation and assistance in making a good project better. While the differences of opinion may still exist, staff has determined that the EIR is adequate, that all the issues set forth in the appeal have been sufficiently addressed, and that all potential environmental impacts will be less than significant with or without mitigation. Staff recommends your board deny the third-party appeal, certify the EIR and addendum, and approve the conditional use permit with the modified conditions of approval as set forth in the staff report. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from board members? Your light is on. Supervisor Montgomery?
I'm just going to assume that we're going to hear from Mr. Bundy, pretty much directly.
Yeah.
Oh, there he is. I was wondering where you were. Hi. And the public, since this is a public hearing.
And Mr. Chair, as with any third-party appeal, staff does reserve the right to rebut any issues that are raised during the public hearing process.
Okay. This is a public hearing, open up the public hearing. Mr. Bundy.
Thank you, members of the board. My name's Kevin Bundy. I'm here on behalf of the Center for Biological Diversity. And again, I will strive to be as blessedly brief as Mr. Haas was. We started following this project in the context of a larger push, both statewide and nationally, to kind of turn towards biomass, specifically forest biomass, as a way to generate electricity. I think it's been seen for a long time, a lot of people are kind of hoping this would be sort of a win-win situation, people could find a way to get projects done in the forest that they wanted to get done and find a use for the materials that otherwise would have been burned in the open or left in the forest. There's been a lot of recent science questioning the, kind of how to account for greenhouse gases, the CO2 produced when you burn wood for energy. And that's sparked some concerns for us, and also, we've got some concerns about the overall impact on the forest of a wider-scale shift towards this kind of energy generation. There are a lot of trade-offs, as always, as I think the last few hours, you've been wrestling with there are trade-offs with any proposal that comes to a body like this. And that, for us, means that a real, accurate, and comprehensive analysis under CEQA is very important and can lead a, really is important for both the public and decision-makers to make a good decision about a project. We had a number of problems with this EIR to begin with. Those are detailed in a number of letters, which have been in your packets, in the Planning Commission packet. One of the main issues was what we perceived as kind of a disconnect between the description in the EIR of what kind of fuel the project would be allowed to use and the analysis of the air quality and greenhouse gas impacts. Basically, the EIR assumed that everything used in the project otherwise would have been burned in the open, and therefore, the CO2 emissions would be about a wash. The project description, from my view, didn't actually provide that. We sat down for a meeting back in April and met with Mr. Story and Mr. Carden. We had a good discussion, about two and a half hours, I think, and came to, I think, understand one another, even where we still have some disagreements. Staff approached me with some conditions that they thought would address that core concern about really only using materials that otherwise would have been burned in the open as fuel for the facility. I had some suggestions regarding both enforceability and also sort of long-term monitoring of the fuel supply that's out there so that going forward, over the 30- or 40-year life of the project, staff can be, and the county can be comfortable that they can actually draw on those kinds of fuels to keep the project going. I won't say that I've been converted to support the project, but I will say that the conditions address a major, what we perceived as a major flaw in the EIR's analysis, and will improve all of our understanding going forward of both the fuel and the forest implications of this kind of project. I really, so, if you deny my appeal, as staff has recommended, and move forward with the project, I would ask that you incorporate the conditions as staff has proposed. And I'd really like to thank staff and county council for all of their work on this, for their professionalism and collegiality, as well as Craig Thomas from Sierra Forest Legacy and Bruce Goines from the Forest Service, and a Kim Carr from Sierra Nevada Conservancy for facilitating those discussions back in April that led to where we are. Happy to answer any questions, but...
Still see any questions?
I just wanted to comment and thank you for your candor, and thank you for working with staff on this particular project. As you know, it started out in one area, you know, we had a bunch of hearings on that and a lot of commentary, and it's nice to see we've got some environmental folks that are interested in collaborating with our staff, and I appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
Supervisor Montgomery?
Yeah, and I, Mr. Bundy, before you leave, I'm sorry, you're not off the hot seat yet. And I wanted to thank you because I really want to echo what Jerry said, which is, I think you helped us take what, in my humble opinion, was already a good project, but make it better. And to me, that's something that we should all really try to work together to do now and moving into the future. And I will tell you, from my own position, I understood your concerns about the sourcing and, you know, all of that particularly, and, you know, what would be the effects on forest management. I have to tell you, from my own standpoint, I live in the wildland urban interface. If I had any belief that this was ever intended to be some sort of forest mining project, I would not have supported it. And these are long discussions that I have had over the four and a half years I've been on this board to make sure that is truly not the intention of Placer County. But I want to thank you for kind of holding our feet to the fire so that we could clarify a lot of your concerns and hopefully address them to the extent that come June 7th, I can go have a nice cold beer at the end of the day. And I would say then that if my board doesn't have any other comments on this, I would make them, oh, we got a public hearing.
Public hearing.
I'm so excited about getting through today's meeting.
Thank you, I appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Anyone from the audience wish to address the board on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. And any more comments from staff?
No additional comments from staff.
Okay.
All right, in that case, I would move that we deny the third-party appeal, certify the EIR and addendum, and approve the conditional use permit with the modified conditions of approval as proposed in the document Mr. Bundy referred to.
Okay, moved and seconded to approve item...
Subject to the findings included in the staff report?
Yes, sorry, that wasn't up there. I'm just reading. It's been a long day. Yes.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the item. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Hearing none. Thank you for your patience and hanging in while we're going through some terrible decisions or some tough decisions. Now, we'll move to quickly through department items, administrative service procurement, blanket purchase orders, various departments. Do I hear a motion? You can take all of these as one. Yes, sir. Mr. Wood?
Good afternoon, Supervisor Holmes, Supervisors. We're here today to present to you a recommendation to approve several blanket purchase orders. With me is Mr. Ben Braemer from Procurement Division, and he'll carry the balance of the presentation.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Honorable Board. Ben Braemer, Senior Buyer with Procurement Services. I'm here to present the recommendations to approve the award of sole-source blanket purchase orders with Columbia Health Ultimate Business Systems, Oracle America, Oregon Community Health Network, and Megabyte Systems for annual software licensing and support. For the past several years, the county has contracted with these firms to perform maintenance and support for various databases and information management systems within the county. This includes Revenue Services Database and Information Management System, the county's automated county online resource network systems, People Software, the Property Tax System Application Database and Server Operating System, which is shared by the assessor, auditor, tax collector, and the clerk of the board. And lastly, the county's standard database system, which includes the current financial system, AS, payroll personnel system, which is known as ACORN, and the Sheriff's Record Management System, also known as TIBRON. Each of the vendors has agreed to one-year renewals in accordance with their current contract terms or previous BPO renewals. Maintenance and license updates for these systems are only available from these current firms. In addition, I'm requesting your board's approval to authorize the purchasing manager to execute the resulting BPOs from this recommendation. And upon your board's approval, the new BPOs will be awarded in a total aggregate amount of $1,088,586. And that concludes the presentation. Any questions?
Supervisor Montgomery, you got a light on?
Oh, that's just leftover.
Any questions from the board? Don't see any. Anybody in the audience wish to address this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for action. Moved and seconded to approve the blanket purchase orders from various departments. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Thank you. We'll now move to item 6, Health and Human Services, Adult System of Care Revenue Contract, California Department of Healthcare Services. Ms. Bellman.
Good afternoon, Supervisor Holmes and members of the boards. We're bringing before you a contract, revenue contract with the California Department of Healthcare Services, formerly Department of Mental Health. This is for our mental health managed care contract. It's a contract we've had in place since 1997. It's a revenue agreement, and it's put in place to establish the rules as well as allow us to draw down the federal reimbursement that we get for providing mental health services to the medical system. Although the contract this year does say a statewide number of $8 billion, Placer County expects to receive about $6 million of revenue through this contract. The state decided they weren't going to put county-specific amounts on it. It is a contract that we manage with Sierra County, who's in process of developing their own separate system at some point, which we're supporting them. Other than that, it really remains the same. We spent a great deal of time clarifying the issues, and so you approved a shorter-term contract last April. This will move us forward for the next five years, and there were no issues in terms of the contract, really just further clarification. So with that, I'd recommend approval.
Any questions from board members? Seeing none, anybody in the audience? Seeing none, bring it back to the board for action. It's been moved and seconded to approve item 6A, Health and Human Services. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Item 6B, Children's System of Care Budget Revision and Contract Amendments to Provide Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services.
Thank you, Chairman Holmes, members of the board. Richard Connect with the Children's System of Care. Driven by a recent 10-month increase in the child abuse substantiations, some of the contract vendors to which families are referred have higher demand for their services than was anticipated at the start of the fiscal year. The five agreements in this item require additional funding in order to meet this demand. Additional state and federal revenue will fund these contract expansions. $1,100,000 is the total request and involves no county dollars. I recommend your approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from board members? Seeing none, anybody in the audience? Seeing none, bring it back to the board for action.
Move approval.
It's been moved and seconded to approve items 6B, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Duran?
Yes.
Wiggant? Euler? Holmes?
Yes. Thank you. Now we'll move to item 6D, Change Order to Blanket Purchase Order with Rite Aid Pharmacy and Safeway.
So we have blank purchase orders for Safeway and Rite Aid, the much larger one being Rite Aid. This has been put in place originally for a small contract for the medically intelligent program that we have run, but we are now in the low-income health expansion program, Medicaid expansion in Placer County, MCE, and that program is growing substantially. One of the critical differences is that the number of people we serve, although at first glance looks about the same, really, we are seeing people that are staying in the program over time. So what we had at one point in time in the old program was about 1,500 people, and now we have 3,000 in the current program. This is a group of people that will become Medi-Cal recipients come December 20, the end of December this year, January 1st, 2014. So this is a very short-term time period. We're not able to manage that population in our current one-person pharmacy outfit, and so making use of our private network makes much more sense. We had a BPO with Rite Aid and with Safeway, so procurement was supportive of expanding those two contracts that were already in place. Again, mostly because it's a short time period and, you know, short duration in terms of it, even though it's a substantial increase. So that is what we're proposing to do. We do think that, it used to be just the Placer County providing services, now it's the Chapada Indian Health Services, it's well-spaced, formerly the Effort, and of course, mental health, providing mental health services. So the expansion is significant. It will, as you see, the maximum amount will be 1.45 million for Rite Aid and 92,000 for Safeway. But happy to answer any questions and recommend approval.
Seeing no questions, anybody in the audience? Bring it back to the board for action.
Move approval.
It's moved and seconded to approve item 6D, Change Order to Blanket Purchase Order with Rite Aid Pharmacy and Safeway. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Public Works, Mr. Kratz. Bridge Replacement Project on Brewer Road.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board. This item consists of adopting a resolution authorizing the chair of the board to execute construction contract number 1121 with the lowest responsible and responsive bidder, Viking Construction, Inc., in the amount of $985,719 for replacement of the bridge on Brewer Road over the branch of Curry Creek. There will be no county cost, and in order to be brief, I approve, I request or recommend that you approve Department item 7A, Actions 1 and 2 as stated in your board package, and I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Seeing no questions, anybody in the audience have a question? Seeing none, bring it back to the board. Second, moved and seconded to approve item number 7, Public Works Bridge Replacement Project. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Hearing none. We'll move to item 7B at long last.
Yes, sir. And this is the Auburn-Folsom Road Widening Project relating to a resolution authorizing the chair of the board to execute a utility construction cooperative agreement with San Juan Water District in the estimated amount of $980,000 to construct water distribution system components in conjunction with the north phase of the Auburn-Folsom Road Widening Project. There will be no net cost to the county, all costs will be reimbursed by San Juan District to the county through the county's future construction contract for the north phase of the road widening project. So with that, request that you approve the Department item 7B as stated in your board package for the cooperative agreement with San Juan Water District, and here to answer questions that you might have.
Questions? Seeing none. Does our audience want to have any questions? No? Okay. All right, bring it back to the board. It's been moved and seconded to approve item 7B, Auburn-Folsom Road Widening Project, North Phase, San Juan District Utility Construction Cooperative Agreement. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion is passed. Thank you.
Thank you, members.
Now we, oh, you want to go ahead?
The board will now adjourn to closed session to discuss one item of existing litigation, Verizon versus State Board of Equalization. Verizon versus State Board of Equalization.
It's a lecture. Not a podium, it's a lecture.
The board has returned to closed session where it discussed the case of Verizon versus State Board of Equalization and authorized the County Council's office to defend the county interest in that action. That concludes the closed session report.